I'd like to call this fourth and final night of departmental budget hearings for the Bloomington City Council to order, and the clerk, please call or roll.
Councilmember Flaherty? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Here.
Ah, there we go. It's very quiet. Stossberg, here. Rallo?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Ruff?
Here.
Daley?
Here.
Zulik?
Here.
Rosenbarger? Asari?
Here.
Thank you.
So I believe we have a motion by colleagues to be made right now?
Um, yes, I would like to move to amend the agenda for this evening's departmental hearing for the 2026 budget to add an item following the report by the Department of Public Works Parking Service Division. The added item is common council discussion and reflection on the proposed 2026 budget, including consideration of reductions and consideration of increases. This added item would be a discussion item only, and no vote would occur.
So, do we need to have any discussion or debate or questions or public comment on this motion at all? I'll take that as a no. Silence is a negative. So can we just do a voice? Oh, roll call. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll on that motion?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Can we? Stossberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Thank you. Tonight's presentations will begin with a priority area introduction on transportation. We'll hear from Bloomington Transit, the Planning Transportation Department, Engineering Department, and Department of Public Works, Street and Traffic Division, and Parking Services Division. So we'll begin with a statement from the administration.
Hi, Deputy Mayor Knapp, and waiting for the slides to come up here, just one second. I want to say first of all, the controller is online tonight. She is feeling a little contagious, and so we suggested maybe she could call in tonight. So she's there, but not here in person. So what's included in the allocations that are listed with dollar amounts in the beginning of this, departments and divisions whose mission is largely centered in this work, planning, engineering, public works, street and parking. We'll also have a guest presentation from Bloomington Transit, who receives considerable funding from the city through ESD, but for this area of transportation. There are some other costs that are listed there from departments that have already presented. If you haven't already looked at it, I would call your attention to the Budget Book pages 311 to 312, where planning, engineering, and public works have put together a list of 2025 transportation-related projects and 2026-related projects. This was something that last year, I think there was a desire to see, you know, what's on deck, and so we've tried to include some information about that this year, and they're sorted by what stage the project is in, which might include planning or study, design, construction, and maintenance, and those tasks are done by different departments. Planning and engineering will both had personnel requests to reduce consulting costs and increase capacity. We're trying to be a little thriftier with our dollars, and if we're going to spend some money on expensive consultants, we'd like to have those be full-time people, that we can get the most out of their time, and you can ask, talk to them more about those questions, but if those positions are not filled, we'd probably need to adjust our list of projects to account for staffing. And you can see there the list of types of projects that are included here, and I think that, you know, in some of this work, some of our challenges are, it's hard to pick them apart because they might have matching funding sources, or we're combining projects in order to save efficiencies. So it's very difficult to say, if you don't do part A of this 12-part project, what is the new cost? It's not as simple as just subtracting a number because of those efficiencies that we gain from trying to do things together. And so, you know, we've got some work to figure out in our PBB implementation on that, but look forward to hearing your questions, and happy to answer some now if you have any.
Okay, do we have any questions from councilmembers at this point? Seeing none. Oh, sorry. Councilmember Rallo?
He was late. So, for instance, an example, whoops. So we have a college walnut corridor study, and we have a, maybe various degrees in which we could implement a project that could be quite expensive. That's something that will be scrutinized to determine to what extent we're going to invest in that.
So I think, this is my understanding, and I'm sure the folks in planning and engineering would know more about this, but my understanding is that at the study phase, we're really looking at, what is the problem we're trying to solve? College and Walnut, the primary problem is safety, and there may be opportunities while you're solving the safety problem to do other things as well, but it's really, I think, when it comes to actual implementation of the project at a later stage, that's when we know, what kind of matching funding sources do we have? What kinds of sewer projects might be planned for near that time? So if we're going to tear up the road, let's do whatever sewer work we need to do at the same time. So I think those questions about alignment happen a little bit later. The study is just, here's all of the facts about what it could be and what it could include, and then as you get further along, you know, we can look at the calendar and see what else is planned by other departments.
Could I offer maybe a, so just to follow this line of thought, I'm trying to, you know, discern where we would place priorities. Obviously, there are sunk costs, there are, as you mentioned, there are federal, state funding. So for instance, there is the side path on High Street. I can't remember what it is, 2080 or something, in terms of its funding. We passed the bond, et cetera. Is that something that is going to be reevaluated as well, or is that something that you consider, like, as a firm commitment at this point?
My understanding of where that project is, if we're in negotiations to acquire the right way to build that project, it is underway. We wouldn't go through the trouble of acquiring them and then say, no, we're not going to do that. That's my understanding of where that project is at.
Okay, so you're, so the administration's committed to that project, in other words?
I believe so.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you for that.
Any other questions from councilmembers? Okay, seeing none, thank you, and we're ready to hear from Bloomington Transit.
A public comment.
Oh, a public comment on the initial presentation. Is there any public comment, either from the room or anyone online?
We don't have anyone online.
Thank you. Now we are ready to move to hear from Bloomington Transit. Oh, councilmember comment?
Yes.
Presentation?
Yeah, that's been the process the entire time.
I think it's going to be a fairly long evening, so I'm trying to move things along. Yeah, it's just a final councilmember comment. Councilman Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I agree with sort of the line of questioning that councilmember Rallo was undertaking, and I'll address that more with the Director of Planning and Transportation and the Director of Engineering, because I am interested in, you know, we keep making plans and plans, and then we make new plans when the old ones haven't been enacted yet, and then plans become stale, and so I kind of do worry about us continuing to make more plans when we haven't implemented the first ones. But, so I just wanted to say that that's something I'm concerned about as well, and we'll talk more about it later. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll add to that, and when new plans are being made, oftentimes that entails spending on planning and design and consulting and analysis, additional spending on new plans, development, well, what plans are, yeah. Anyway, thank you. Now we are ready, I think, to hear from Bloomington Transit.
That's a charm. All right. So just the advanced process. All right, good evening. John Connell, General Manager of Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation. I have Krista Browning with me, who is the Bloomington Transit Controller. So Bloomington Transit is a standalone municipal corporation with a five-member board. Three board members are appointed by the city council, and two by the mayor. The Board of Directors are responsible for the policy and financial oversight of the corporation. The BPTC Board has reviewed and recommended this 2026 budget be presented to this council Bloomington Transit originally was a department of the city in a transition to an independent municipal corporation in 1982. However, the relationship between the city and BT has remained strong throughout the years. BT has continued to partner and contract with the city for IT services and support, some legal services, and for liability and risk management services. Most recently, the strong partnership has been evidenced by the 2023 five-year inter-local agreement dedicating ED-Lit funding to BT for Nance Public Transit. So thanks to that partnership, BT has been able to use the 2023 and 2024 ED-Lit funds for local match for federal grants to complete over $15 million worth of capital projects. Projects completed to date include the purchase of 16 zero-emission battery electric buses and charging infrastructure, microtransit vehicles, and dispatching and scheduling operating Additionally, the funds have also supported operational expenses for the implementation of Sunday service on fixed routes and BT link access. Funds have allowed for the creation of two new positions at BT, a grant and procurement manager and a marketing development manager. Key projects created as a result of the ED-Lit funding, the Blink microtransit program, Sunday service, the new staff positions, and the discounted fare subsidy program will continue in 2026. BPTC will absorb the costs of these programs in order to earmark the 2026 ED-Lit funds as local match for the new administration operations and maintenance complex. So the 2025 and 2026 city ED-Lit funds that have, will be pulled together as local matching funds for our 2025 FTA 5339 discretionary grant application for the land, design, and construction of the new facility. The grant request has been submitted. Anticipated total project cost is $45 million. Progress to date, BT has executed right of first refusal agreement for the purchase of the subject property, while environmental work is being completed. NEPA Phase One work is complete, NEPA Phase Two is underway, and completion is expected within 30 to 45 days. BT has issued a request for qualifications to select a team for a build-operate-transfer approach for the design and construction of the facility. Breakdown of the 2026 budget, Class One, personnel, slightly over $9 million this year. Class Two, materials and supplies, $1.5 million, closer to $1.6. Professional services is $3.4 million, and capital is $5.2. The total 2026 budget is $19,383,402. Some budget notes, on the expense side, personnel, 3.92% increase, general rate wages were increased 4%. This includes a general wage increase for employees, but it also includes additional hours of service as we strive to get back to pre-pandemic levels. It includes $174,000, what we call contingency services. This is money we park in the budget in the event an opportunity presents itself in 2026, for example, for an additional partnership agreement. Health insurance is scheduled to increase 18.5%. Liability insurance is up 161%. Not only the premiums increased, but deductibles have as well. Materials and supplies, we see close to a 12% reduction. This is primarily driven by the need for less diesel fuel and oil because of the 16 new battery electric buses. Conversely, the electric budget has increased by 215%. So just to give you an idea, battery electric bus cost per hour is 27 cents per mile. Cost per mile for a diesel bus is 80 cents. So there are significant operational savings with the battery electric buses. On the revenue side, we're projecting property tax revenue to remain at $1.7 million. The BPTC local income tax revenue is set at $650,000. Passenger fares are budgeted to increase 27% to $2.5 million in 2026. These revenues include general public cash fares, employee pass programs, Blink and mobile cash fares. They also include our partnership agreements. Currently, we have agreements with the Rive, Mueller Park, Atlas, Indiana University, and Monroe County. Advertising revenue is projected to decrease from $175,000 to $80,000. That is being driven by the board's position to limit the number of fully wrapped buses On the federal and state side, revenue, 2026 budget includes $3.9 million in federal flex funding. We have 5310 and 5307 funds to be used for transit buses, support vehicles, vans, and for capitalizing preventative maintenance activities. Federal 5307s, an amount of $2.4 million, will be used for operating assistance. Our state public mass transportation funds are budgeted to remain the same as 2025 at $2.6 million, and we will be using $824,870 in BT reserves to balance this budget. As far as our 2026 goals, our number one goal is to begin the process for the design and construction of the new administration operations and maintenance complex. In order to expand service, rightsize the BT fleet, and provide space for additional employees and vehicles, we need, a new facility is a necessity. Part of that project, we plan to partner with Ivy Tech to create a hands-on battery electric vehicle technician program with dedicated space for that purpose. Our number two goal is to prepare for the impacts of Senate Bill 1. $100,000 is programmed in this 2026 budget to update, transform BT, our strategic plan. BT must plan for the potential reduction of property tax and lit funding, and explore options for future local funding avenues. We must begin discussions with Monroe County for the adoption of a lit rate for a special taxing unit for transit. This may require rethinking the current organizational structure of the BPTC Board, pivoting from a five-member board to a seven-member board, with representation from Monroe County. Third goal is to get the word out on the Blink program. We've programmed $100,000 for marketing purposes, specifically for the Blink program. This is our microtransit program. Currently, we know there's many residents within the city that are not in walking distance from a fixed route bus stop. The microtransit program is designed to provide public transit services to those individuals. So our goal is to get the word out and increase ridership. So the passage of this 2026 budget will allow BPTC to position itself to continue to transform public transportation in our community, and allow for improved service options for our residents. Our employees are committed to serving the community and continuing to achieve the goals outlined in our strategic plan. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your perfectly timed presentation, Mr. Connell. Do we have questions from councilmembers at this time from Mr. Connell? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. Always good to see Ms. Browning as well. I see her once a year on this occasion. I wanted to know how much you currently have in reserves, since you plan to use $525,000 in reserves.
This will leave us with approximately $10 million in reserves.
Oh, well, that's good. When is your, you have a separate union contract with your drivers that's separate from any other city employee unions, right? When does that expire?
The end of this year. We're in negotiations currently.
Okay.
We have, well, there's a, we've concluded negotiations, and it's subject to a ratification vote by the union.
Okay.
But it expires, the existing collective bargaining agreement expires December 31st of this year.
So you feel confident that your budgeting in the personnel category will cover increases for them? Okay, great.
We've, we, our goal, and the board's goal, is to keep our workforce in the competitive range, and we talk about competitive, we're looking at other transit systems within the state, a similar size, similar operation, and we're there. Took us four years to get there, but we're there.
That's good to know. Is this another Ask Me local? Or which union is it?
Yes, it is Ask Me.
Yeah.
Correct.
You mentioned that the personnel category includes $174,000 for contingency services. I didn't quite understand what that's for.
So what happens from time to time is, we'll be in the middle of a calendar budget year, and say there's a new property, student housing facility, and they contact us and say, hey, you know what? We don't want to run our little mini buses anymore. Is there anything we can do to work with you? And then we talk about a partnership agreement, and we have to have money in place in order to, in that current year, or we'd be coming back for an additional appropriation. So we found it easier just to park that amount of money within the budget, and then if opportunity presents itself, we're prepared to move forward immediately.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Daley, I'll go to you, and then back this way.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I'm really excited about the transition over to the electric buses, and I think that's fantastic, laying out the difference between the diesel and the electric costs, and with the steep increase now in the electricity budget, do, does BT have solar panels at all to help offset the cost of charging the buses?
Not at the Grimes facility. We do at the transfer center, but not at the Grimes facility.
Okay. Maybe that's something we can put in the budget one year down the road?
Well, we've talked about that for the design with the new, with the new facility.
Yeah, awesome. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you. Thank you, Director. A lot of exciting work going on. My question is about the electric buses as well. So you have 16 buses in the fleet?
Eighteen, eighteen total. We just took delivery of the additional 16.
Eighteen total, and what percentage of?
Forty-one percent.
Okay. So I'm curious about the maintenance expenses, and you mentioned operational costs, and Councilmember Daley talked about, you know, it's one-third of diesel fuel. Does it make up for the capital investment and also the maintenance costs?
Yes, because we have three 60-foot diesel articulated buses that we've ordered, and they came at under $1 million, so there were about $40,000 difference. So the cost of just a traditional diesel bus is parallel to battery electric. There used to be a significant difference in the cost, but for whatever reason, they're tracking pretty close together now.
Okay, I think that's all I've got. Thanks.
Questions, other questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Asari?
Thank you so much. Director Connell, could you tell us a little bit about our, our cost per passenger seems to be, or cost per ride? I don't know what the best metric would be, but it seems to be staying pretty equal to what it was last year, which has trended down from?
Correct, so ridership was up 4% last year over the previous year. We fully anticipate ridership, some significant increases in ridership this fall. Because one of the, you know, problems we've had in the past was the driver shortage, having proper staffing levels to meet the needs, the capacity needs. Crushed fingers, I think we're over the hump, but as it stands now, we're adequately staffed, and what we can do is we can put out additional buses when we have capacity issues, and that's why we're purchasing the 60-foot articulated buses. So on those routes where we do have capacity issues, so what I mean is, driver pulls up, the bus is full, there's 15, 20 people wanting to get on, we can't get them on. So we have to send another operator out in a bus. Double operating cost, but a 60-foot bus, you can meet that.
Yeah, so the current, the current proposed investment, it would actually, we expect to bring down the sort of cost?
Absolutely.
Cost per rider, is that the best way of thinking about it?
Cost per hour of service.
Cost per hour of service, okay. And then how does that, how is that overlapping with the extended BT link coming onboard a little bit before campus was in full action?
Right.
How are we expecting that to trend with students? And do we have any initial, initial figures on student usage?
We do not, and one of the things, like I said, we want to prioritize in 2026 is getting the word out about the Blink microtransit program. We've made some changes when it originally launched. It was designed, if you were in a zone, you still had to go to a designated stop for the pickup. We've transitioned to a curb-to-curb model to make it much more convenient, but the big problem we see is, when we talk to people about the Blink microtransit program, yeah, I've heard of it, but they don't know how it works. So that's going to be our focus, to get the word out, because there's a lot of individuals who need access to services for transit, and they simply don't know this exists.
And would you say that the microtransit is having a negative or positive effect on the, on, you know, if we're looking at the sort of outcome of cost per hour?
Currently, it has no fiscal implication, because it's designed to provide trips when the existing resources are already in place. So we have our ADA complimentary service for individuals with disabilities, so those vehicles, they, there are times where they are positioned idle because the demand's up and down. So the idea behind the Blink program is to maximize the use of those resources while they're in place, so we can book those trips with the operating expenses that we're already incurring. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Oh, Councilmember Stossberg?
Thank you. So this year, one of the new things has been that you've had that, the first route that goes out to Ivy Tech and into the county, and I just wanted to know how that's going in terms of ridership, in terms of like the collaboration with the county units, all of those pieces.
The collaboration's been great. Ridership is starting to, starting to see some improvement. We made some route changes for the start of the fall semester. We've been working closely with Ivy Tech. For example, the route now serves Ivy Tech twice, you know, as it goes outbound and inbound, and it's more of the schedule changes are more aligned with their class schedules. So we think that's going to be an improvement, and we've also worked with them for, pushed out some discount codes, so students can ride for free through September. Try to get them to take advantage of it, and maybe they'll continue to use it.
Great, that's, that's really great to hear. And then similarly, we just talked about the B-Link a little bit. What are ridership numbers like for that right now?
It's pretty low. It's very low. I can get you the exact numbers, but that's why we want to prioritize getting the word out on the availability of the service.
Okay, and what about the downtown shuttle?
Shuttle? Well, we had a lot of positive feedback regarding that project, and we, it was slightly over 50 rides. So, you know, it's one of those things that we're going to evaluate, if there's things that we can do. that we can do to make it more attractive. You know, we'll work closely with the city. I have some ideas, but we'll, we'll have to see where we come out in the, in the spring.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Seeing none, we can move to the public for, public questions from the public, either in the room or online. Do we have anybody online? Seeing no takers, we'll come back to the council for final comments. Councilmember Sossberg?
Thank you. I just want to comment positively on several bus stop improvements that I've seen being made over on the east side and some better incorporation of the bus stop on a particular corner related to a greenway improvement. And I just wanted you to know that I'm really noticing those things and I think that they're, that they make a really big difference, especially in terms of visibility. When I first moved to Bloomington, I was thoroughly confused about how to even take the bus and where the bus stops were. And that has just like improved. So I was thinking about that this morning on my dog walk, actually, how much that has improved over time, just in terms of my like usual route and being able to identify exactly where those stops are. And that that is just really good progress, I think. So I just wanted to, to throw that out there. I know that there are other of those projects going on in other places. The improvements by Kinzer and the bypass and that Kroger there, which are still kind of in progress, but those are looking really good. And I'm, I'm really happy to see those kinds of service expansions, both for safety of users, but also for visibility of the service so that people don't have to wonder how to take the bus or where to get the bus, that it's a little bit more obvious, so.
We installed 26 new passenger shelters and that included some of the site's accessibility improvements as well.
Any other comments from council? Councilmember Rala?
I also want to react positively. I appreciate expanding services on Sundays. I also support the transition to electric buses. I think that's going to pay dividends in the future with likely rising fuel costs. And I, and I think it's logical to expand geographic service. So that's great. It's proceeding well and looking forward to maybe furthering that. And the board expansion coincident with that. So thanks for doing a great job.
You know, on a side note, with the, the new battery electric buses, the second generation, we are getting over 12 hours of range out of them. So tremendous improvement from the first generation. So that's, you know, exceeded our expectations.
Battery technology has improved considerably. Wonderful. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Seeing none, thank you very much for answering questions and for presenting.
Okay, thank you.
Now we're ready to move on to planning and transportation.
Good evening. David Giddon, Director of the Department of Planning and Transportation, here to share with you our proposed 2026 departmental budget. Word about the structure of the department, we have two divisions. Development Services Division has nine employees, one of which is part-time, is the larger of the two divisions. And the Planning Services Division has five full-time employees. And we are proposing with our 2026 budget, two new full-time employees for Planning Services, which we'll talk about as we proceed here tonight. And then we also have, I call support staff, so that would be two administrative staff and myself as director. So our 2026 budget shown before you here with the previous three years included, shows a significant increase for Personnel Services, thanks in large part to the very generous salary lift that the, that the department, as well as other departments, experienced during the course of the year. And also the addition of two proposed full-time employee positions for our Planning Services Division. There's a modest increase in our supplies, but I actually think before the final bill, we're going to be able to trim that back by a few thousand dollars, as I learned recently that we have a couple TransCad licenses for NPO staff that we don't need next year or henceforth. So that should be trimmed back significantly. And then for our other services line, we have a 8% decrease compared to what we asked for last year. And that's largely due to the fact that last year, we, with some ambition, anticipated the potential to do two full corridor studies. We were only able to do one that required a consultant, and so we're anticipating doing one next year. So the, the request, the ask reflects that. First to Development Services. So this division of the department has really two stock and trade documents. The first on the left is the zoning map, which I think you're all familiar with. The one on the right is the UDO, the Unified Development Ordinance. Both are living documents in that they change regularly. On the left, the plan, the zoning map changes whenever there is a rezoning, either initiated by the city or initiated by a property owner. And then on the, on the right, the UDO, as you know, changes with some frequency. There are in the pipeline right now a number of proposed UDO amendments having to do with single-room occupancy use, urban agriculture, affordability incentives, a variety of other things. And of course, staff brings every year really an omnibus amendment, could be several dozen different changes having to do with everything from Scrivener's errors to more substantial changes. So it truly is a living document and I think in its healthiest form, that's, that's what it's meant to be. Looking at numbers, this, this graph kind of gives you an indication of the traffic that comes through the office. These are 2024 and 2025 to date, numbers for a variety of permits and cases that, that the department handles. And these are just, these are raw numbers. These are outputs and inputs, really. If you input an application, you get at the end of the process an output, which is a permit. So these are not outcomes. Challenge as we move towards an outcomes-based budget is to, is to figure out how to make, how to form genuine and worthwhile outcomes that look at quality of service. Here, you know, the, the thing that's done is, is the questions that surround these, these points is what is the speed? What is the efficiency? And then what is the accuracy? And those are a little bit difficult to gauge for a variety of reasons. But those things really rest on the quality of the UDO. So when we're reviewing a permit, we review it against the UDO, which is a tremendously complex document. And so the question of accuracy really is one of how much time the reviewer gets and how valuable that time is in terms of its efficient use and how quickly we get back, get it back to the, the permit holder. So, so those are things that as, again, we move to a outcomes-based budget, that we're going to have to try to figure out how to assign numbers to sort of the quality of the act that, that staff is doing. So for the year-to-date, the numbers are pretty similar to what they were last year, with the exception of zoning violations where we're a little bit ahead of schedule, if, if that's the proper phrase to be used, which is probably not the case. But looking more at raw numbers, BZA petitions, last year we heard 30. Kind of interesting, and I didn't realize this until we aggregated the numbers, but 28 of those 30 were approved by the BZA, two denied. 2025 year-to-date, the numbers are similar. 27 heard, 22 approved, three denied, and two withdrawn. And then of PC, Plan Commission petitions heard and Pla Committee petitions heard, all were approved. Again, this is sort of an interesting qualitative question in that we don't determine the success of our job based on whether or not a BZA petition is approved or denied, or even if the BZA votes in concert with staff's recommendation. When we've done our job well, we have provided the decision-makers with a complete picture of, of what's being requested and then also a rational and coherent recommendation that they can work off of. So as we, again, fashion outcome-based budgeting, and that's, that's going to be a challenge for us. Something that didn't get put on the picture because they didn't fit on the screen, we've made our floodplain management program quite a bit more robust this year as Senior Environmental Planner Rachel Johnson has taken over the position. She's done an extremely good job fleshing out what exactly that should be. And it's really, you know, more important than ever as we see things like the 100-year floodplain looking more and more like a 50-year floodplain. It's very important that we honor natural features and, and the floodway, and the floodplain as we do our, as we conduct development and allow development. In concert with that, this year she has passed seven flood development permits and that corresponds to about 50 flood development inquiries. And then speaking of inquiries generally, we surmise that we get about 21 walk-in email or phone-in questions from developers, builders, neighbors about zoning things in general. And that, that equates to about 5,400 per year that we also address. Then one thing that's not at all quantitative that we didn't put on here is just the sheer, the fact or the requirement of UDO maintenance, which is a heavy lift. Again, it's a tremendously complex document and it's necessary to have an ongoing feedback loop so that we're taking into account things that work well with it, things that don't work well with it, and then how to account for amending the things that don't work well. Every year we have a list, a laundry list that we keep, and every year there are items left on that list that, that just, there's too many to accomplish. So that's, that's quite a heavy lift. Additional projects within the Development Services sphere include the Housing Attainability Study that we've talked about, that will culminate in, at year's end, a set of housing policy recommendations that will be brought to the council for review. Those will be primarily UDO amendments, although they could be other kinds of housing policy changes. And right now, we're, we're meeting with neighborhoods, we're meeting with IU, we're meeting with MCCSC, other employees. We're going to council constituent meetings and we're, we're trying to get as much of a broad-based set of feedback as we can about housing attainability and the relative lack of it in the city. I think it's worth mentioning again that, that the question of housing attainability, the difficulty that people have finding housing here is, rests on a lot of different factors. It rests on a whole host of them. The UDO happens to be one of them, just one of them. But it's also the only thing that is literally controlled by people in this room, literally in this room right now, essentially the council and the mayor, with input from the Plan Commission and staff that the UDO does what it does and says what it says. So where it provides obstacles, we can address that. Or it doesn't provide proper incentives or proper opportunities, we can address that too. So that's why we are focusing our attention with regards to housing attainability on the UDO. We are also undergoing constantly development review process improvements. So that's internal refinements, which, which we talk about constantly and, and put in place, and some of them work and some of them don't work. To that end, we've, we're kind of taking a step further and we're going to be commissioning an external audit. We are in receipt of the proposal and are having conversations with the vendor right now about what exactly that's going to look like. We're doing that with CBU because our development review processes are pretty well intertwined. It will also involve hand and engineering because they play a role in those processes as well. Just a couple visual looks at some of the things that Development Services does. Upper right, we're the people that go and tell the guy that you can't keep your dilapidated car in your front yard. We are the people that, that collect sign clutter when it's present in a way that's not allowed by ordinance. Floodplain management as seen on the lower left. And for the first time, my experience, we do emergency undetected karst hole evaluations, which you see on the upper center, that's at Cascades Golf Course, where an unknown karst feature presented a hole, someone actually fell down that. And our senior engineer, our senior, sorry, environmental planner is empowered by the ordinance to make emergency declarations about how that can be filled without going through the usual set of steps that require the remediation of karst. And it's just a fascinating picture to me for some reason. Planning Services, that's actually a photo of our long-range planner, Karina Pazos, who very unfortunately left for a job with the City of Chicago last week. But anyway, that's her receiving an award on, on behalf of the department in Virginia at a conference pertaining to the department's execution of Safety Week, which was a campaign, an outcrop of our Safe Streets for All program that we just finished last week. It coincides with Move In Week for IU. And for, the award was for last year's presentation of Safety Week, which was kind of a neat thing, a neat feather in the cap for, for Karina and for the department. So Planning Services, active projects right now for 2025 involve the College Walnut Corridor Study, which we hope will be finished late this year. The Kinzer-Madison Rogers Corridor Study, comprehensive, very long corridor study that is started earlier this year and we hope will finish in the summer of 2026. The Indiana Avenue and potentially Dunn Street Safety Improvement Project, which started earlier this year and may finish early in the spring. We're in very, 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 very active conversation with interested stakeholders, including Indiana University, IU Transit, Bloomington Transit, and Emergency Services to make sure that we get the safety improvements that we need to see on Indiana Avenue and that they get a roadway that functions in, in the, the way that they hope it does. It's hard to satisfy all those competing interests, but we're doing our best to do that. And then the 10th Street Safety Improvement Project, it's, it's a study of 10th Street where it stretches essentially from downtown to the campus edge on the west side. And that should be finished late this year as well. Additional projects, we resuscitated the Safe Road to School Program, which was very active in Bloomington up until about 2012, and then it just stopped for reasons we're not able to piece together by looking at the documentation. But anyway, we, we met with MCCSC, put that back together and started at University Elementary. The goal here is to find ways for more students to be able to bike and to walk to school. So that includes things like public education, outreach, looking for optimal routes, actual hard scape finishes, hawks and, and crosswalks and, and things of that nature. We will finish with university and MCCSC already has the next school in line for us to work on, and that will be Tri-North Middle School. We finished the 2050 NPO Transportation Plan. That is the plan that keeps us eligible, eligible for federal funding as a transportation urbanized area. It's completed every five years, so the next one will be the NPO 2055 Plan, and we'll begin on that in a couple of years. Finished a resident, are we finishing a resident-led traffic calming project, that being on Washington Street, south of the police station, where neighbors got together and decided that they didn't like the fast cars going down their residential street all the time. They worked with us to put together a, a, a program, a traffic calming program that will involve some street cushions as well as some daylighting, where remove cars parked at intersections so it increases visibility for pedestrians and for motorists. We also had the Local Motion Micro Grant Projects, which are low-dollar but high-impact projects that go to local organizations and they, they sort of work to foster a culture of biking and walking, mostly among children. And then finally, we unveiled the Crash Dashboard in March of 2025. Here's a picture of that dashboard, which is publicly accessible. It shows all crashes within county, the city, and the urbanized area, and it provides a tremendous amount of detail about each of those crashes so that trends and other factors and problems can be observed and analyzed. And it's been, I think, a very successful, a partnership with the ITS GIS department, whose work was very appreciated there. Still in the Planning Services Division, on the lower part of your screen there, you see the two red circles. Those are around our two proposed new FTEs. There would be a new long-range planner, so we already have one, so this would create a second long-range planner position, and a new alternative transportation coordinator position. And I'll talk a little bit about how those positions would increase our capacity in a very positive way. So 2026 projects, again, for Planning Services, we would finish Kinzer Avenue, the Kinzer-Madison So 2026 projects, again, for planning services, we would finish Kinzer Avenue, the Kinzer-Madison-Rogers, rather, and then the Indiana Avenue Corridor Projects. We would start two new corridor studies. Without the new FTEs, we would only be able to start one. We would start two new Safe Routes to School projects. Without the FTEs, we would only be able to start one. We would implement low-cost, quick-build safety demonstration projects. So those are things like hard center lines, temporary bike lanes, speed cushions, signal-to-stop sign conversions, mini roundabouts, often temporary materials, temporary builds, just to examine whether or not what we want to see happen will in fact happen. And then they can either be retrofitted with permanent materials, or the temporary materials can be kept for as long as they'll last. This is a map that kind of shows the, the corridor priorities. This is from the SS4A Plan. So in the bold dark red lines, you have the priority corridors identified. They are kind of called out of this by a pretty robust scoring process that examines crash data, that examines roadway configuration and what we know about the propensity of certain configurations to, to create conflict for cars, for bicycles, for pedestrians. And so on that scoring matrix, we've, we've determined the highest, high, medium, and medium-low priority corridors. So there's a rhyme and a reason to how it is that we determine the next thing that we work on. It's, it's literally going down the line in terms of priority ranked with regards to A few more projects, we'll move forward with a core public engagement plan. This will be a sort of meat-and-potatoes engagement plan that can be used for transportation planning, that can be used for other types of comprehensive planning. So rather than starting from scratch for every new campaign, for every new study with determining how we're going to engage the public, this will give us a template around which we can then tailor to the specific needs of, of the program at hand. And then we'll initiate new comprehensive plan studies for focus areas and/or urban village centers, which is a departure. Our long-range planning department and staff have really focused on transportation planning for years and haven't done anything with regards to traditional comprehensive planning, really since the 2018 adoption of the comprehensive plan. So more traditional comprehensive planning, it's not necessarily going to be transportation-focused, but it's going to look at a, a, a neighborhood, a district, a part of, of a city, sometimes a township, and look at land uses, look at, engage with, with the people who are stakeholders there. Vision, do visioning processes where you want to, you want to define how you want this place to be in the future. As an example, here is a map, a portion of a map, the land use map from the comprehensive plan from 2018, and it identifies, as you can see, the, the areas bound by green, those are called focus areas, where there is special attention to be given to certain circumstances. For example, the long one on the north is the northern gateway, the long one on the south is called a southern gateway. But there's not much information other than that. So if, if we were to do more comprehensive planning work here, we would actually dig into what that area needs. We would work with ESD, for example, to see if there's some sort of seeding or incentivizing to get certain types of businesses or activities there. Similarly, you can see the little black asterisks placed seemingly randomly at different intersections. Those are what's called urban village centers. All that the comprehensive plan gives us is the black asterisk. There's no narrative or text or anything that says, what do we do with these? Those are in fact areas that could be commercial nodes, think Hillside and Henderson. We haven't done any deeper diving, exploring from a comprehensive planning standpoint to find out how we could make that actually happen. So again, with these FTEs, we could do this type of comprehensive planning, and, and that's, again, something that hasn't been done very much here since the adoption of the comprehensive plan seven years ago.
Mr. Hiddle, let me, sorry to interrupt, but just wondering how much longer your introduct, your, your comments will probably take?
I think I'm done.
Oh. Yeah. Ah. That's why I found that pause at the end of your last, your last line. Well, thank you very much for that informative and detailed presentation. Appreciate that very much. So we'll start with questions from council members. Councilor Marallo.
Thanks for your presentation. Really some excellent aspects to it. This is a question that I think I might explore a bit more in writing, but it has to do with level of service of our roadways and in our transportation plan. The, the metric is between A and F, and we have minimum service of D and new service of C. Are, are roads falling within those parameters? Are there ones that are E or F that you know of that need attention?
I'm hearkening back to last year when I deflected a lot of these questions to Andrew Seabor, because I think I have to do that in this case. I think that's probably a question for, for Andrew to address. Those, the level of service metrics are, are the Bailey Week, Bailey Wick, the wheelhouse of the engineering department. Our planning focus is very heavily on safety rather than, than LOS.
Yep, got it. Okay. Then I'll withhold that. I, let's see, I have a minute forty. So when you describe BZA petitions, which have been holding kind of steady, 30 or so a year, it looks like.
Yeah.
And you say you don't have a, you're sort of agnostic in terms of where, where it falls. But there is information there in terms of if there is consistency about, that might be implemented in code. In other words, if people have a common sort of, you know, say, urban agriculture or something, they want to do something that is maybe requires some sort of dispensation from the BZA, this could be an indicator. Is, are, is your team kind of tracking that as well for code revision and so forth?
Yes, we, we do look at BZA cases specifically what's being asked for, and if there is a pattern of repeat asks for the same thing, then that very well could be an indication that the ordinance needs to be tweaked, more than likely to allow for that thing. And with the urban agriculture, yeah, that did actually arise as a proposed amendment out of its initial hearing at the Board of Zoning Appeals, where a number of the BZA members and a great, great number of folks actually indicated that, that that would be a, expressed the opinion that that would be a good candidate for a UDO amendment.
Yeah, code revision. So I just have a few seconds left. The Rolado development, there's landscaping that was done there. Did you tag-team with utilities on that, or was that something that was implemented by utilities? I'm talking about the rain gardens. I'm out of time.
Well, that's a, that's a good question. Our inspectors will review lands, conformity of what's actually put in the ground with the approved landscape plan. The rain gardens is the domain of CBU.
Okay.
And it's, yeah, it's a little bit unusual.
I'm out of time, so, thank you.
Questions from council members.
Councilman Pete Martin Smith.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. Great use of your time. I think you were right on the button there. I'm intrigued by the increase in zoning violations from 2024. Do you see a pattern of types of violations, or is, do you have more staff to cite people? Or do you, do you have any more insight into that increase?
We have two full-time enforcement staff, and last year, one of them was on maternity That's the only thing that, that, that I can think of. Otherwise, it could be just an anomaly. I don't think we've had a, a, a sort of a concentration of a certain type of violation this year versus last year. So it's, it's sort of been the availability of staff time to, to pay attention or to go out there and, and look for things. Otherwise, it's, as far as I can tell, it's anomalous.
I had another question, and this is hearkening back to your memo in our budget book. You talked about studying a linkage fee. Could you tell us a little bit more about that, please?
Yeah. So with the affordability incentives, the ordinance spells out a variety of, of requirements for developers who are building residential housing. If you want to build it taller or wider than the ordinance would ordinarily allow, then you are obligated to provide some measure of affordable housing or pay a fee in lieu of that housing. For non-residential projects, and this, this clause in the ordinance has only been invoked once, since it's been in there, for non-residential projects, the ordinance assumes that there will be induced attainable housing by virtue of the jobs that are created. And so the developer of that non-residential project is obligated to essentially provide housing or pay the fee based on the determination of that, that linkage study. Now, no one, there is no inclusionary zoning in Indiana, so no one here does that. We did find a vendor in California that does conduct that study, and it's actually, it's, it's sort of an advanced formula that looks at the, the, the metrics of, of the non-residential entity. If it's a business, the number of jobs, how, how well those jobs pay, the likelihood of those employees of living in a certain area approximate to the, to the place. And it punches out a number, then it's, it's a fee that that person would pay. So the ordinance has called for that for a number of years now. We've, we've never actually gotten a consultant to put that together for us. It's been done once with the development of the Posh Hotel, and Jackie Scanlon, our assistant director, kind of DIY'd in concert with that developer, a formula that worked for everybody. We don't necessarily want to have to do that again, so we do have a vendor we're talking to. We're expecting an actual quote from that person very soon, and we'll go forward. It's a very long answer, I'm sorry. We'll go forward with, with getting that study done.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Sari.
Thank you so much, Director Hiddle. I'm going to focus mostly on permitting. I know, though we're, we're talking about transportation, it's the opportunity to ask you. The question that I have is, when we think about permitting, what do we see as the main purpose of the system of permitting? Because at the beginning, you were talking about timeliness, you were talking about the difficulty in, the difficulty in putting this into an outcome-based budget. And so, so just generally curious, so how we sort of view the purpose of permitting?
Well, when we're reviewing a permit, we're checking it against the UDO, just as a building inspector would check it against building code. And, and we do it in concert because the building inspector is, is usually working on the same permits that we are. So we check it against the UDO to make sure that it's meeting all of those requirements, which is, you know, at an elementary level, it's things like building height and setback, not being in the floodway, not triggering other environmental concerns. But of course, our UDO has, has layers and layers and layers of these requirements, so it's, it's a long check. So I think accuracy is important. We do want to make sure that what the UDO requires and calls for is represented in the development that we are, we are approving. Timeliness is something that we hear a lot about because we could make our, our, our processes a good deal more efficient. So it's really both of those things, and there's a balance there. Because if, if you focus solely on speed, then you would tend to compromise quality or accuracy. If you focus solely on accuracy, then you tend to compromise the speed or the efficiency of it, which puts our development community in a bad hole.
Right.
So it's really both things that we're looking at.
And then do we, do we currently analyze how the types and locations of permits that are, particularly those being issued, line up with priorities in the comprehensive plan?
Say that again.
Do we currently analyze how the types and locations of permits being issued line up with the priorities in our comprehensive plan?
How the types and locations of permits being issued line up with priorities?
Yeah, so when we, when we think about, again, with that question of outcomes, do we, do we measure it against our comprehensive plan, or are we measuring it against just compliance with the UDO?
I'm, I'm trying to think of how to measure it against the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan, I mean, it's, it's, it's giving guidance on land use.
Mm-hmm.
It's giving guidance on, you know, a, a whole, a transportation and environmental concerns and things like that.
Well, also some set of priorities, right? And so, so I, I'm just interested if we view all permits equally, or if we say, hey, there's certain things that we've prioritized as a city, and we want to make, you know, if people want to do the things that we want to see done, we want to make that easier, right? But my mind of time, ah, I'll follow up.
We do have an expedited path for simpler permits, so if it's strictly an internal reconfiguration or something like that, and there's not site work being done, then that involves much less of our review. So we expedite those. If, if there are substantial environmental issues, then we'll pass that permit to our environmental reviewer. I'm not sure I'm getting at your question, so maybe we could address that in the, the written questions part? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for that reply. Generally, what I've been trying to do is, with the timer on council questions, is if the council member is asking a question when the time runs out, I want to give the time for the response. But would not, I would not want the council member then to ask another question after the time has run out, and this, this is fine. I think the way we've gone so far. But just, just so everybody understands, that's kind of the way I'm running it. Okay. Councilmember Sossberg?
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions about your proposed FTEs. I, I sense that it's maybe been a little challenging sometimes to find planning staff and engineering staff in Bloomington, Indiana, and so adding FTEs, I just kind of have to wonder, like, is that, are those job descriptions set up for success in terms of attracting applicants?
It's a good time to ask that question because right now, we have our other long-range planner position that Karina left is open, and we are receiving applications, and we're receiving a good number of legitimate candidates, more than I would have expected, or more than I would have expected maybe a year ago. So I, I think that, based on what we're seeing right now, I think that we will be able to get candidates for those.
Great, that's great. And can you talk a little bit about the alternative transportation coordinator and what kind of specific stuff that you would be wanting them to do, and also what kind of collaborative work they might do with, with our TDM manager? Because it feels like the, those are almost like two sides of the same coin, at least in title. So if you could talk about that for a minute, that'd be great.
Yeah, the alternative transportation coordinator will take over parts of the current bike ped role. We're renaming the bike ped role the Safe Streets Manager. Do a lot of the same stuff, but we'll give up some of the specific bike ped items to the alternative transportation coordinator. Additional components of that role will include public education, outreach coordination, secondary involvement in the Safe Routes to School project, and, and that's kind of the core of it. As far as how it will relate to the TDM manager, that's a good question, and I don't know that we've had that conversation, but I think that's a conversation that we should have.
Yeah, I think that that would be important. So if part of that alternative transportation coordinator role is being recovered from the bike ped coordinator, which would then be called the Safe Streets Program Manager, can you talk about that that's not just a proposed title change, it's also a job description change? So can you speak to what that Safe Streets Program Manager responsibility would then become?
Yeah, implementation of the Safe Streets for All Plan, so the bike ped coordinator job existed prior to the adoption of the Safe Streets Plan. One of the best practices in that plan is to assign a staff person to be in charge of managing and carrying out its actual goals and objectives. And so he, that role would be moving more in that line. So it's very much tied to the actual Safe Streets for All Plan, Action Plan.
Okay, great, thank you. I have some other things I'll follow up with on the written comments.
Okay, other first-round, I guess, questions from council members at this point. Okay, Councilmember Rosenberg.
Hi, thanks, Director Hiddle.
Hi.
Sorry, I was going to write my questions, and then my document left me, and now I'm back. But is there a reason that position, the new But is there a reason that position, the new one, is being called Alternative Transportation? Because that's like an outdated phrase, and now it is Active Transportation, Just Asking? Like, alternative is kind of, you know, been deemed as like negative, kind of, you know, like not priority kind of thing? And I mean, just like in, is that set in stone, or can we kind of like update it to?
No, it's not set in stone.
Current times, yeah.
That's a good question. I had not thought of that.
Yeah.
So, I can...
It's a tiny thing, okay. Just a little, I mean, councilmember Asari brought up permit, permitting, but what I've always heard is, for developers, it's so difficult, because we have so many things that are conditional. So, when we're talking about a duplex, I mean, the duplex over on East Wiley took, was delayed six to nine months, and like, that is the major delay in permitting, not necessarily just trying to build a permitted structure, right? And so, are there plans with this UDO outreach to talk about making things permitted instead of conditional, like if we really want to help with the permitting process?
Yeah, I think the question of by right, housing for the whole slate of missing middle housing is very much part of that conversation. Yeah, and to make something that could be by right conditional applies a tremendous amount of friction to it. We know that here, we know that, you know, it's sort of a dynamic in zoning everywhere. So, that's part of the conversation for sure.
Okay, that's awesome. And I think we talked about that, I guess, when we were talking about the form-based code, that making things more permitted with less rules, so people know what they can build, I guess, easier and faster, is just, it's a step in the direction of form-based, right?
True, yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And then, just on some of the planning, like what I gleaned from this presentation, is there's like a ton of planning going on in planning, and I do want to just kind of ask a little bit about the doing. Like, the Indiana Dunn Project actually was started in 2023, and it wasn't funded at all last year. Is, right, and so, or maybe 2024, it wasn't funded this year, okay? And so, like, but you're saying, next year, we're going to get that done, so it's in the budget, is that what I saw?
We're supposed to finish the plan.
Okay, so still not doing it.
Come again?
Still not doing it in 2026.
Yeah, actually, so after the planning, so the continuum goes planning, design, construction, maintenance. We do the planning, and then we move it to the design phase. I'm not sure what is in the, in the, waiting for it as far as funds for design. That's a good question.
Okay. Any other questions at this point? I have, I have one. The new FTE positions, my understanding was that you, they'll be engaged in some planning, allow more planning, project planning and analysis, and long-range planning to be done than otherwise would have, if that's a correct understanding of what the new FTEs would allow. I'm wondering if those activities that we'll now be able to pursue, those planning activities, would they have been outsourced without these FTEs, or would they just be things that wouldn't get done?
Both. I think some of it wouldn't happen at all, and then some of it would be outsourced.
Do you have any ballpark percentage, which would have, you know, what percent would have been outsourced, versus what percent would be?
I don't. It was in the, the action plan that sort of the mathematical case was made, that these two new FTEs would supplant a certain degree of what would be required for external consultants. I can, you know, I think we're following this up with a written, written back-and-forth questions and answers, so I can get that to you at that stage.
Okay, thank you, thank you. We're ready to move to public for public comments. Anybody online?
Yes, we do have one online.
All right. Well, we rarely start with a person online, let's go ahead and try that.
Yeah, Kevin Keo. I heard that you're going to have a, you're planning an external audit, which caught my, caught my ear. And so, I would think that would be done by an independent group. I think you're looking for a vendor, so this would be an independent group of professionals who would look at your processes, my understanding. I was wondering if it's a requirement, you know, and if it is a requirement, like how often do you need to do it, or is this ad hoc? And also, assume there would be criteria, standards, best practice, something that you'll be measured against, and that there will be a report. Hopefully, there would be a report. And also, with that report, there would be some type of an opinion or a conclusion. And also, if there's any judgments, like if you fail to meet some criteria, they would recommend something, and there may even be action plans associated with it. But I was, and also was wondering, I wonder who receives the report, and how open the report would be, and it would be open to the public. And again, the ad hoc thing, I think is important, because I think this may be something very valuable, that would add a lot of value, that you would want to do annually. And you would report to the, the common council, and something we'd openly hear at a meeting like this. So, that would be my quote comments. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Other public comment from inside the chambers?
Good evening, Councilmember Ruff. This is Christopher Reif from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, and I should have gone first, because that was a really good question from the online attendee. I just want to say, give special props and kudos to Mr. Hiddle and his outreach efforts. The chamber's been a critic of the Plan Department and some of the permitting, the reuse, and some of the, some of the culture there in the department, and he's been really willing to sort of go out and do some key outreach. His phone line is always open for me to call, and I just want to say that we are appreciating that effort is being made, and they are on top of these things. So, I want to come back a year from now, if I still have my job. And we'll see those improvements on that, and especially as it comes to outcome-based budgeting that we've heard from today. So, I just want to appreciate his work there in the department, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Anyone else online?
No.
Thank you. So, go back to council for final comments. Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you for your presentation. I, so, harkening back to what our deputy mayor began with, is I'm very interested in the feasibility of projects that are high cost going forward, in reevaluating those facing a period of austerity. I mean, clearly, we're going to be looking for revenue sources in the future, uncertain what those will be. There are other, there are possibilities. Some of the possibilities, a lot of the possibilities are, might be regressive, and so I'm very cautious about that. So, I want to balance that with the feasibility of large projects that, you know, if we had unlimited funds, we could implement, but clearly, we're not going to be doing that. My other concern is related to costs, and that is the idea of concurrency, and I'll bring this up with engineering, and that is the level of service of not just streets, but everything in the city, which I think is good. I think we have a high-level service in many respects, so. But it seems to me that we're continually trying to play catch-up, and I wonder if there are ways that we can internalize costs for new development that would obviate the need to raise fees, raise taxes, or suffer less services. So, this idea of Nexus Studies, I mentioned at the beginning, first day of the budget, which they implement in California, to determine if, you know, all the costs are internalized, and particularly large developments, or whether those are, you know, we're going to need expanded public works, or expanded water treatment, or expanded roads in the future. I want to say, I really credit you with focusing on urban village centers. I think that those are something that is, has, stands to be an incredible public good to focus on those areas and try to redevelop those, especially the southern gateway corridor. And I mentioned earlier that the Rolado Development, because I've visited it, looked at those, the landscaping there, it's extraordinary. It really is an example of best practices. It's really a model. And so, congratulations to your team and to the Utilities Department for implementing that, you know, diverse rain garden with permeable pavers, and it really is a beautiful, a pollinator garden, actually. Thank you for your, for your work.
Other final comments from council? Councilmember Asari?
First, thank you, Director Hiddle, first, for being such a wonderful person to work with and bringing such excellent service to our city. I know I'm going to be preaching to the choir here, but I think that what I am saying probably bears repeating again and again, that the lived experiences of our, of our, of those who tried to do business in Bloomington, I think, has shown and made somewhat clear that our primary approach to things like permitting has tended to be more leaning towards compliance. And I think that's important, you know, compliance with UDO, making sure that what gets built in Bloomington meets the standards we've written into law, it's absolutely necessary. But I think that we need to recognize that permitting is much more than a compliance function. It's a place where all of our community goals, from housing to transportation to sustainability, become realities. So, when I look at permitting, I don't just see paperwork, I see this gateway where a comprehensive plan, particularly in any other plan that we've written, comes alive or it stalls. And if the plan calls for more infill housing, walkable corridors, sustainable design, then our permitting system should make those kinds of projects easier, faster, and more predictable. I also get the reluctance to set clear targets around permitting timelines out of a fear that sort of focusing on speed could compromise accuracy. But I think that we need to be the type of place that does both, that we say very clearly that this is what you can expect when you work with Bloomington. And even if, even if that timeline isn't this like global, you know, worldwide, world-beating benchmark, we still need to be able to tell people clearly, this is what you're going to expect when you come to us. And I think that the feedback that I've got from constituents across the city is people wanting to do business here, they say it's just so complex, and they never know what to expect. And so, I would push for us setting really ambitious targets, and then, and then holding ourselves accountable to that. And so, why is this relevant to our budget? To me, I don't really believe in panaceas, but the closest thing that I think we have to, to, you know, a big priority that we can deal with that would affect all of the other things that we've talked about over these four days, is making it easier to do business in Bloomington. Whether that's that you're trying to build a house, you're trying to start a company, whatever it is, we've made it so slow, so difficult, so hard, and I've heard this sort of across the board. And so, let's set really, really strong targets. I think it's one of the most impactful investments we can do and make as a city, and I think that right now, it's a little bit of a gap in this year's budget. Last year, we had a lot budgeted for that EPL transition, that sort of happened a bit later in the, so maybe we might have had stronger targets at this year, a better reflection on sort of how that investment took place. But I'm really just interested in us putting whatever resources necessary to sort of fix this sort of underlying, I don't know, structural problem that we have in the city. So, I know I'm preaching to the choir, but just worth saying as many times as I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, along those lines, I wanted to follow up on Kevin Keo's questions. I think he was talking about an external audit that you mentioned, and I think that is about permitting. So, if you could talk a little bit more about whether it's a requirement, what are the standards to be measured against? Will the report be public? Will it be done periodically? I think those are some of his questions.
Sure. It's not a requirement. We've asked for it, because we acknowledge that there's much room for improvement in our processes. We've asked them to spare no feelings, or to come hard when they, when they do their work. A big part of what they're going to do is gather focus groups of our frequent filers, so builders and developers and engineers and surveyors who are most familiar with our systems, and get the most genuine and unfiltered comments they can from them. And then, from there, you know, we've, we work in Bloomington, some of us have worked a few other places, but we don't have great knowledge of best practices with regards to how, again, complex permitting processes can be done. You know, if we have four eyes looking at this, is that redundant? Should we just have two? Should we be sending it from here to this stage, or that stage to this stage? I think there's a lot that we can learn from best practices that we just don't have experience with. So, they're going to bring that, that sort of experience to bear. They're going to make recommendations. We've actually also asked for them to maintain, I think, two to three months after they've provided the report, to help us install the stuff that they've recommended that we do. And it's, you know, not only is it not a requirement, but we kind of had some trouble finding groups that do it. So, we, I talked to a lot of engineering and planning firms, and there was some familiarity with the idea, but not too many were, you know, had very much experience doing it. So, we've arrived at American Structure Point, which is an Indianapolis-based firm that has done some work in Bloomington. They will be, you know, by our mandate, they're going to be completely impartial and, I think, give us a good report. I had not given any thought at all as to what to do with that report in terms of presenting it to boards or commissions, or making it public. I mean, it will be publicly accessible, just by the fact that we have it, we've asked for it, and it'll be done. But yeah, I have no problem bringing it to the Plan Commission or to the council, so that, so that its findings are known. Yeah, it's not, it's not an exercise in just performative appearances or something like that. We really want to get to them to get to the heart of helping us improve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council members? Oh, Councilmember Sossberg?
Thank you. First, I want to say, like, generally and philosophically, I support a shift away from consultants and to in-house staff. I think that that is ultimately probably preferable, as long as the projects and assignments being asked don't require that kind of specialized sort of, like, information and knowledge, like you were just talking about with the audit consultants. So, I support that, generally speaking. And then, I also just wanted to also kind of express my concern about what Councilmember Piedmont Smith and Rallo I think were both referring to earlier, in terms of the, like, number of plans versus what is it possible to construct? And that is something that, you know, I've, I've heard a couple times, like, you know, a plan can only sit on a shelf for so long before it becomes pointless, and you have to like redo it all again. So, I really don't want to, like, us to be creating more plans than we're able to actually follow through on, in construction. And so, one of the things in terms of the 2026 cross-departmental project list, which I really appreciated how that was all laid out, in terms of looking at that, but there's just a whole lot of things in that design phase, and just a few things in the construction phase. And construction is, I mean, it's the most costly, but it's like both in terms of funds and also in terms of just like people, power, and I mean, we've heard about it from streets, like, there's only so much our staff can do in terms of how much street repaving they can do every year, even if they had, you know, endless money for materials and supplies. There's only so many hours in the day, only so many employees, only so many appropriate weather days and things like that. So, I just want to kind of express that as a concern, to make sure that our number of plans and that kind of stuff is managing to align well with what can be realistically constructed as we go further down the line, so that we're not wasting planning money. And in my opinion, it would be better to say, delay a plan by a year, because ultimately, construction would have to be later than to try to get all of these plans up front and then have them linger on a shelf for too long. So, I then, at this point, just have to trust that your department is going to be making sure that they're, that they're doing. sure that they're, that they're doing that and also with all of the other related departments that, that deal with those long-range plans and projects. So, thank you very much.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Any other final comments? Councilmember Rosenberg?
Hey, sorry, I just want to kind of do again what I already said, but just because there was so much permitting talk. But the thing is, like, we, like, there's so many, like, housing types that are not allowed in our zones, right? Like, our walkable zones for the most part disallow missing middle housing. And so like changing the permitting process is not going to reallow those zones, but changing the UDO is, of course, right? And I know that some people know this, but I just think it like needs to be said that I think that there is this like enormous focus on permitting that is taking focus off of ways to make meaningful change to our housing policies. And I don't disagree that developers do say that, I mean, I agree that developers say that it's so unpredictable whether a project will be approved or not and get permitted. But what they are speaking about for the most part are conditional projects. And it is that, I mean, I've asked staff before, like, the time that a permit, an application is submitted to the end time that it is approved, if it is approved. And like, I think it is, it depends on a meeting, I think, maybe, but it is like 30 days. And then, I mean, again, it's just like when we're looking at a conditional duplex that is delayed six to nine months, it's just like no comparison where we are creating extra costs for people we want to be developing housing in our city. Thanks.
Any other comments? Then I'll just make one sort of related to what Councilmember Stossberg just said. You know, I'm really interested, given that, given that personnel costs are, you know, the major cost in, for the city, I'm really interested in thinking of these, getting an idea more quantified, and this may be really hard, extremely difficult to do, but quantify the, let's, for want of a better term, maybe the oppor, we all know about opportunity cost, right? You spend money in one area, you can't, it's not available for others, but the opportunity creation that might be represented by new FTEs in these areas, doing things that would otherwise have been costed out through outsourcing, consultants, there, and then for being done are probably more efficiently or in terms of expense, and creating some opportunity to off, that we can sort of, I don't know, just sort of see those FTEs as a little bit of that cost being offset by this opportunity creation that we would be doing by getting, by hiring those folks. So those positions adding those positions. Anyway, I know that's probably difficult, but if, oh, that was an adjutor, you didn't have one last thing to say? Well, with that, thank you very much, and we're ready to hear from engineering.
Good evening, council members. I'm Andrew Seabor, the city engineer and the director of the engineering department. I look forward to providing you with an overview of the engineering department, our 2026 budget proposal, and some of the department's initiatives and challenges. Please know that I'll be happy to answer any questions or expand on things that I may be glossing over after my presentation or in follow-up dialogue in the coming weeks. To quickly introduce the department, we oversee use of the city's right-of-way through permitting work done by other entities, managing capital infrastructure projects, and making data-driven decisions regarding transportation operations. 100% of our work is assigned to the city's transportation priority area and supports the vision and goals of the city's adopted plans. The department comprises 15 approved positions, and this year we initiated a summer internship program in which our interns completed meaningful work assisting us in developing new tools and identifying process improvements. Now jumping right into the department's proposed budget. This slide summarizes engineering department budget by category and compares the 2026 proposal with prior years. The engineering department's 2026 budget proposal is approximately $7.5 million. This budget is nearly double our 2025 budget. However, it's critical to keep in mind that in prior years, the department received significant bond funding for capital projects, and those dollars would not be captured in this slide. Along those lines, the engineering department manages projects that receive funding from other sources that are also not captured in this slide. Some of those sources include TIF, other departments like city council, federal funding allocated by the MPO, and state funds awarded by INDOT. New to the 2026 budget, some of engineering's proposed budget includes capital funding from ED Lit. Dialing a bit into some of our proposed changes, our personnel line is up for nearly 40%. This reflects changes associated with updated citywide compensation practices plus some specific department staffing changes that I'll discuss in my next slide. The department's supplies account is up nearly $15,000 compared to last year, but the proposed value is generally consistent with years prior to that. Our services budget is fairly flat with a minor decrease associated with an anticipated decrease in some on-call engineering contract service work. And finally, capital outlays reflects a significant increase, given our inability to utilize new bonding to cover some of these expenses. A detail that may be lost in this macro review is the shifting of our fleet replacement funding into a larger citywide funding account. As I previously alluded to, I'd like to highlight the department's three personnel-related changes included within the 2026 budget. The first change involves promoting one of our three engineering field specialists positions to a new program manager position. The impacted positions are responsible for overseeing the city's right-of-way use permit program. The work of these staff members is critical, given it impacts the safety and accessibility of the city's transportation system while also being responsible to protect the city's infrastructure. This change will improve workload distribution and provide structural resilience by better leveraging existing capacity within the department. It also provides a staff development opportunity while enabling improved end-user consistency and responsiveness. The second change adds a second project engineer position. In recent years, the department has struggled to move forward capital initiatives and has left approved budget funds unused due to insufficient capacity. Further, due to capacity constraints, we have been unable to make desired progress on standardization exercises and told other departments that we were unable to assist in desired ways. Beyond these missed opportunities, the city's safety action plan suggests there is even more work that we should be doing. We are proposing to add this new position to address existing capacity limitations and to make incremental progress on initiatives like those laid out in the safety action plan. While the cost of this position is noteworthy, the anticipated savings from reduced consultant service contracts will offset the cost of creating this position and still result in a net increase in overall engineering capacity. The third and final proposed change adds a new construction inspector position. Similar to the additional engineer, the cost of this new position is expected to be offset by a reduction in a single inspection service contract per year. Such a contract covers the cost of this new position, but the new position would triple our capacity compared to that contract. This added capacity would enable the city to keep a closer eye on projects, risking the risk, reducing the risk of expensive change orders, reducing risk of work being done incorrectly the first time, which impacts construction timelines, and to improve our ability to identify risks that may otherwise be missed until years down the road when facilities may prematurely start to degrade. Further, this and the other proposed changes are expected to enhance morale by reducing strain on other positions and enable staff to feel more comfortable doing basic things like taking PTO during the summer when their kids are on vacation, but it's heavy construction season. Before I move on, I want to quickly reflect on the team I'm here representing tonight. I am blessed to work with a group of people that are so dedicated to serving the community and supporting each other. They are highly qualified and competent. In part because they are so great, we continue to experience turnover with a turnover rate of 29% since last year's budget presentation, and we've never operated with all 15 positions filled. Looking ahead to the future, I anticipate continued challenges with filling hard-to-fill positions and recognize the importance of continuing to develop a culture that attracts and retains the best. Reflecting on the department's org chart, it's important to bring attention to the fact the engineering department is now responsible to staff its first commission. The transportation commission was established with the explicit purpose of guiding the city's transportation endeavors focused on eliminating fatal and serious injury crashes, promoting sustainable transportation, fostering equitable access, and promoting community-centric design. To date, the commission has met twice and has three meetings scheduled later this year. Staff from planning and transportation have been extremely helpful in getting this commission up and running. Other departments, including ESD and Public Works, have also participated in meetings. It's worth mentioning the commission still has two vacancies, so I encourage folks that have an interest in transportation and in serving the community to reach out and apply to join the commission. Up to this point, staff in the commission have been laying the groundwork of establishing rules and procedures and setting up systems to develop and communicate meeting materials. We've been playing a bit of catch-up, given a gap in time, without having a commission to discuss transportation matters and look forward to dialogue about things like Public Works' ongoing parking study, traffic signal timing practices regarding things like leading pedestrian intervals and pedestrian recall, and upcoming capital projects like the next resident-led traffic calming project. Speaking of capital projects, I'd like to take this opportunity to describe the basic life cycle of a typical city transportation project. In short, I tend to think of these as having five phases: planning, design, right-of-way acquisition, construction, and operation and maintenance. The planning phase is generally led and facilitated by the city's planning and transportation department that you just heard from. In this phase, basic project concepts or general direction is identified. Key questions about prioritization and funding tend to also be included. The engineering department is typically involved in this phase of a project, but generally in a support role. The following three phases, design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction, are phases in which the engineering department is typically the lead department. This is our expertise and one of our focus areas. In the design phase, we look to engineer solutions that reflect city goals and priorities, including balancing issues like constructability, future maintenance needs, stakeholder input, and property impacts. Speaking of property impacts, some, but not all, projects do require the acquisition of additional right-of-way. In the right-of-way phase, we look to mitigate property owner impacts and make fair offers based on industry best practices and, of course, legal requirements. And finally, in construction, we advertise and award contracts, oversee construction work, coordinate pay applications, change orders, and ultimately work to close projects out and transfer the asset to the departments responsible for their management upon completion. So then the final life cycle phase of a project is generally led and facilitated by the Public Works Department, but depending on the facility type, other departments like CBU or Parks also play key roles. That being said, the engineering department supports this works much like we support the planning phase of a project. Looking ahead and at recent examples, a big focus of ours has been on maximizing opportunities. Taking a project like what might have been a traditional maintenance project, but using that as an opportunity to implement safety improvements, like improved roundabout design, enhanced crosswalks, creating new green stormwater facilities. Some projects, like a basic maintenance effort or a traffic calming project, may be able to take place within a 12-month period, while other projects can easily consume at least three years of time or may be planned out years down the road depending on funding availability and prioritization. There are a few additional initiatives that the department is engaged on that I'd like to quickly highlight. Engineering plays an important role in the review of development projects, especially as they impact the public right-of-way. We have supported the Hopewell development with Hopewell East infrastructure nearly wrapped up and active construction oversight on the first phase of Hopewell West. We are also in communication about other major projects such as the Summit PUD. The timing of this project or a project like Summit is outside our control but can have very real impacts on our time and capacity. As I alluded to a bit earlier with the proposed staffing change of our right-of-way use permitting team, their work is of great importance. As an example, with our legal department's assistance, the work of this team enabled the city to successfully claim a $1 million bond due to violations associated with a contractor's failure to repair the city's facilities in a timely fashion. I believe it was in 2020, a significant revision to city code was adopted that improved the city's ability to work with contractors and hold them accountable. Since that time, we've been identifying some desired refinements that we'd like to move forward. The exercise of drafting these changes has been taking some more time than desired, given some turnover and position vacancies. The team also continues to incrementally make progress on developing and documenting standard references like drawings, operating procedures, and tools like EPL. Progress on these initiatives improves efficiency, but finding the time to do this work can be challenging. I'm particularly impressed with the team's adoption and utilization of EPL and excited to see its continued development. I anticipate additional efficiencies to be realized as other departments have started utilizing this program more as well. Thank you for your time. In consideration of the engineering department's budget proposal and updates on some of our initiatives, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
We have questions from council members. Councilmember Stossberg?
Thank you. I'm going to ask you kind of the same question that I asked Director Hiddle about staffing because you're proposing more staff, which once again, I'll say that I'm generally in favor of adding staff in lieu of consultants, but the traffic engineer position, for example, has been open for a very long period of time because you've had such a hard time hiring in that position. You mentioned that you've lost a lot of staff, so I guess I have some measure of concern that we won't be able to fill those positions. And then, like, where does that leave us in terms of the kind of tasks that, that consultants had been doing or contractors had been doing for us?
Yeah, I'm hopeful. I'm always going to be hopeful that we're going to fill these positions. I think, I, I trust city staff. We need these city staff to even oversee the consultants that we do hire. I think some of our engineering positions are hard to fill. I think other engineering positions in other departments like CBU can also have some potential challenges of being filled. That being said, I am hopeful. I also get jealous when I hear other departments say they're getting lots of applicants though, too. So, but I'm, I'm also, that's great for them.
Okay. I guess I'll just cross my fingers and hope that we get some good applicants for that. And I think that any other questions I have, I'll submit in writing because I have to deal with some of the more specific, like, capital outlay kind of, kind of money stuff. But I also want to say I appreciate it in your memo, how you said under capital outlays, like, explaining that the, it, that it increased a lot, but that that was because of, last year we had the go-bond that was kind of offsetting that. So I appreciate that explanation. So, thank you.
Councilmember Rollo, you had a question?
Yeah, a couple. Thank you, Mr. Seabor. Thank you for your good work. I had a question. Could you expand a little bit on this $1 million bond that you required of?
Could you say that again? I'm so sorry.
The $1 million bond that you referred to.
Yeah, so that, that was a bond, whenever another entity does work in the city's right-of-way, through our right-of-way permitting process, we require that entity to provide a bond. And, and typically, that's essentially to protect the city's interest. If, if they walk away from the project or if they leave the road open, we then have some, some protection. So, so that money is essentially going to be put aside. I think something will be coming to council here shortly regarding that.
Well, I thought that was just standard practice that we did that. I mean, I know that we've been negligent in the past. There was an example, I can't remember the development, on East Morse Pike where the developer walked away without putting in infrastructure for the promise for the city.
Correct. Yeah, this is a little-
It was in Renwick, but I can't remember what it was, it was a different name, but yeah, you're right.
Yeah, there's a lot of different types of bonds, so there can be a lot of confusion, but, but yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll drill down on that during questions, written questions. So, back to my major question that I talked about with the director of Planning and Transportation, that is, and it has to do with the fact that, you know, what I observe is we're, we're in a period of austerity, but we're anticipating, for instance, a 21% rate increase for utilities in order to pay for maintenance and also for new facility. We're going to need a new fire station soon on southwest side of the city. We're trying to catch up- We're trying to catch up with police staffing. I'm concerned about level of service for roads, and so my question was directed about the level of service. Are we within those parameters? Are there any outliers that we need to focus on?
I hate to do this, but level of service of what? Level of service can be, like, level of service of the pavement condition, level of service of travel times, level of service of comfort of-
I'm referring to transportation plan, level of service A through F, and it falls between, you know, minimum D for old projects, C for new. Is that, that's my understanding?
Sure.
So, capacity, I suppose.
I'm happy to follow up more with you offline on this, too, but since I heard the question earlier, I did a little research. I didn't see in the comp plan or the transportation plan an establishment of a level of service threshold. Usually, that's related to delay in travel times, but I didn't see one in there.
Okay. So, 10 seconds left. Did we finish the road service study for Summit, the 4,250-unit development that was approved?
Traffic study's been completed.
Okay.
An M O U has not yet been established regarding transportation.
And that's available to us? Could you send it?
The traffic study is available. Sure.
Thank you.
Other questions from council members? I'll just ask a quick one. The Deputy Mayor, Nepp, at the start, mentioned right-of-way acquisition as, I don't, if it was intended to be this way, but sort of as an indicator of commitment already gone towards a project. Has the right-of-way for the High Street project all been, is that all acquired?
Right-of-way acquisition for the High Street's ongoing. Some has been acquired, some is in process.
Do you know about what percentage roughly of the needed right-of-way has been acquired at this point?
I don't. If you want, happy to dialogue further.
Yeah, okay.
It's in the early phases.
Thanks. Maybe it's not fair to expect you know that kind of detail off the top of your head, but I was just wondering.
There are a number of parcels along that project, I think, in my mind. We've done other projects like that, like Seventeenth Street where there were a lot of properties, so it's something we're accustomed to.
Thank you. Councilman Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I wanted to follow up on Councilmember Stossberg's question, what I thought was part of her question, but anyway. Are any of the expenses of the two new positions expected to be offset by savings from not needing as many consultants?
Yes. Yeah, I think essentially by creating these positions, there, in my mind, there is no added cost to the city and we're gaining capacity.
Okay, because I didn't see much decrease in category three, which is where consultants would be.
A lot of these consultant expenses that we actually pay for out of category four because they're associated with projects, capital projects, like design fees.
Okay. Which is very hazy because it's a 97% increase because of the geo-bonds. I wonder if we could maybe tease out some of those details.
Yeah, I could provide past examples of contracts that we have issued that I don't expect we would need going forward, for sure.
Okay. Great, I'll follow up. Thank you.
Other questions from council members? Seeing none, we'll go to the public for public comment. Anyone in the room like to make a comment?
Steve Olney, come to you as the Chair of the Transportation Commission, the new commission that Mr. Seabor just mentioned. Very encouraged to hear the emphasis in this year's budget on getting positions filled and right-sizeing departments to have enough positions. I know that that's true for your office as well as the Engineering Office, and so that's why I come to implore you to take the opportunity to fill one of the two vacancies that is still on the Transportation Commission. We have one council and one mayoral position still open. I know that when I interviewed for the seat, I was in a cohort of three, and there was a cohort of three that met right before us. Surely, one of them would be qualified. What I don't want to do is see another commission that continues to be understaffed. The council wrote an ordinance that called for nine members. There is an awful lot of work to do for a commission that combined three earlier commissions, and we need all hands on deck. And also, if you can think of a second, a person who you've already interviewed that you can forward to the mayor's office if they're looking for somebody still, that might be a boon to everyone. So I just wanted to say again, we still, we have, we, one of our council appointees quit before attending more than one meeting. We've only had two meetings, but Robert's going to hit the road if I can use a transportation metaphor with the September meeting, so if you can see fit to name somebody, we'd be appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody online that's waiting to comment?
No.
Nobody. Anyone else in the room want to comment? Seeing none, back to council for final comments. Any council members want to make a final comment? Councilmember Stossberg?
I'll just thank Mr. Seabor for his presentation. I think that I kind of already said a couple comments earlier in question time, so thanks.
Other comments? Seeing none, that we are ready to entertain parking services, street and traffic. Public Works and, yeah, street and traffic.
You can tell Steve was here last. All right. Timer set? Ready to go? All right. Good evening, folks. Adam Wason, Public Works Director for the City of Bloomington. It's always an honor to talk about the good work we've been doing this year and introducing what we hope to do in 2026. This is for the Street Division of the Public Works Department, and obviously, transportation is a big topic that hits many departments across the city. Public Works is certainly a key contributor and partner in managing our transportation network. We're the key player in the transportation game when it comes to the ongoing maintenance of the infrastructure that makes up the entire transportation network. What does that maintenance look like from a Public Works perspective? It goes beyond just filling potholes and includes our entire in-house and contracted paving program. It includes maintaining all of the traffic markings, signals, and signs for managing all users of the transportation system. It includes all of our efforts to maintain our right-aways with snow and vegetation removal and management. It also includes our annual investments in sidewalk and side path maintenance. Additionally, the Street Division helps manage our urban street canopy and oversees our street lighting program. One thing I'd like to highlight with the Street Division is that while they are the main team involved in maintaining our right-aways day in and day out, they are also the first Public Works team members that are responding during our most inclement weather, whether severe storms and tornadoes, flooding, or winter weather events, this team makes up our first responders. And I really hope that there is a day when the general public recognizes this team as true first responders. Whether during this past May's tornadoes that hit the south side of the community right outside of city limits, they were responding. They were helping other communities by sending staff out to assist in their dire needs. This past winter's multi-day snow events, this team responded day in and day out, worked overnight, and put tremendous, and they put tremendous effort into doing it to the best of their abilities. They are an emergency management response team for the city, and I really want to highlight that. It's important work, and it's seemingly coming up more and more often. To highlight some of our budget materials, 2024 and 2025 have been some of our most successful paving seasons on record. These investments are really important in order to maintain the important infrastructure that we're tasked with maintaining. It's about levels of service, as Councilmember Rawlins was asking about. We're putting similar efforts into not only maintaining our streets and roadways, but into maintaining our pedestrian networks. We've had tremendous success in eliminating trip hazards through our saw-cutting and grinding contracted program that has eliminated thousands of trip hazards over the past several years. Great economical investment, economic investments in reducing those hazards. We've also been heavily investing, with your support, over the last several budget cycles in our traffic management system, the Centrac system. This is a conversion to a new and exciting technology with all of our traffic signals, which will be a major step in our modernization efforts in maintaining and managing the traffic network. We're also well on our way to obtaining all of our updated pavement and sidewalk condition index data that was funded last year. The sidewalk data collection is currently underway, so if you see a small ATV with cameras roaming neighborhood sidewalks, that's what it is. We should have that data within the next few months. While this has been the good news of the past few years, we do have challenging times ahead. We're trying to balance all of the safety, infrastructure needs that are so important, but we're also trying to be creative with these budgetary constraints we're facing. This year, we've had to do some transfers from funds that normally would come into the Street Department and had to utilize other funds. We're really making sure that, in coordination with the mayor's office and the controller's office, that we come up with a strong plan to continue to invest in the maintenance of this important infrastructure. Otherwise, you know, I highlighted our emergency management response, very important. One of the big areas that we're still trying to stay ahead of and catch up with in some ways is with capital and equipment purchases. The cost of this equipment is ever-rising, and we're, you know, we're trying to continue to invest so that we don't get behind there. The last part is the retention of qualified and trained staff. This is an ever-and-ongoing topic of conversation. We've had a lot of retirements of folks that had worked with our Street Division for 20 and 30 and 30-plus years over the last five years. And so as we're bringing on younger team members and replacing those that have retired, they're often not coming with the C D Ls that the previous employees had already obtained, so we're working a lot with C D L training programs. And then, you know, the onboarding and training in the workplace is also very important and something that Joe Van Devender and his team do very well. So, those are mostly my comments tonight for the Street Division. I do want to thank our Street Division Director, Joe Van Devender, for his leadership. It's outstanding, and he does a fantastic job working with the team at the Street Division. Danny Bitner, his deputy director, as well as Jeff Morris, Tony Carroll, and Freddie Love make up the leadership team down there. And then Dana Workman, our finance manager down there, has many years of experience working with the city and does a tremendous job with the financial management and our grant applications for the Community Crossing Program. So, want to recognize that staff and the whole team down there, our frontline staff, those workers that are operating the equipment, running the snowplows, dedicated team that really put great attention to the work that they do. So, happy to answer any questions, and that's all I have for you on the Street Division budget.
Thank you, Mr. Wason. Questions from council on street and traffic? Councilmember Rawlins?
Thank you, Mr. Wason. So, it used to be our goal to repave streets every 20 years, and, well, I was actually told that, not by you necessarily, but that's what I was told by people when I asked. Naively, I believed it. It's unrealistic, I understand, likely. So my question is, we have needs, and then we have capacity. So, do we have, I'm concerned about adequate funding for the relative to meet the need.
So, our traditional funding through the local road and street and the motor vehicle highway fund, through state revenue sources, those are going to be dwindling, it seems, and that's the apparent trend that we're facing. What we're doing is trying to utilize, leverage other outside funds. The Community Crossings Grant, we have really been successful with that, so that's leveraging outside funds. We're looking at the Parking Meter Fund to help make investments in our downtown as it's intended for. So it's, while some of the traditional funding is going down, we're trying to leverage other funding sources and opportunities to stay ahead. Do I think we'll continue to stay ahead or improve our P C I's? Not with current funding levels, but we'll hopefully be able to maintain at this point in time. We'll see, we'll get some good data on how we've done these last couple years with the current study we're doing right now, which we should have this fall.
Yeah, okay, that's a good answer. Obviously, arterials and, you know, get attention, as they should. I'm concerned about residential streets that are literally falling to pieces, and so I'm curious to know, and we're not going to resolve this in a minute, but putting forward a plan, are we capable of addressing those and what would it require, even if we can't find the funding? But, you know, where are we in that landscape?
Each of the last, is it three times we've done the pavement condition index study? Each of the last three studies that we've presented to the council show exactly what we need to invest to either maintain or improve our rating systems. Happy to make those available to everyone once again. We-
I mean, do we have a map? Can I look at a map and say?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay. Fantastic.
We'll set a meeting in my office with Joe and Nate, and we will go over all the beautiful maps that show all that. And just to your point about the every 20 years, residential low-volume streets and neighborhoods expected at about every 20 years. Arterials, mains, those are more in that every 10-year range, so that's kind of the differentiation there.
Okay. All right. Last 10 seconds, 15 seconds. You're maintaining Kirkwood. It's getting a different intensity of use because it's been closed. We've had festivals like Pride Fest, and it looks a little bit stressed out. I've talked to some, you know, is it your domain to go, when it's closed? Do you have to power wash it and clean it and so forth? And is that a challenge?
We're doing that much more regularly. Yeah, it's part of the reason we asked for that additional downtown specialist within the facilities budget and definitely trying to keep after that. And I overall think we've done a good job, and I have gotten good feedback from the business community down there.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Other questions from council? Councilmember Stossberg?
Thank you. I just noticed in the line items under other services and charges, the streetlights and traffic signals budget was cut almost in half. Am I reading that right, first of all, because there've been, like, shifts in, like, what account they're coming out of? And if I am reading that right, like, what does this mean in terms of updating and improving that infrastructure? Was there, like, was it just overbudgeted? Have we done some of that transition already, so we need less money next year? Like, what's-
This is just a result of the budget scenario that we're facing as a whole city right now. So, you know, while we won't intend to maybe, while we'll try to invest the same amounts in our paving, it may be that we are reducing the amount of LED conversion we're doing for streetlights next year to try to make up for that. It's going to be a balance, and we're trying to make hard decisions with not great scenarios ahead of us.
Okay, so basically because of overall budget cuts related to changes in, oh, maybe we're getting a corrected answer here?
Yeah.
Do you have more to add?
No.
Okay. So because of overall budget changes, do, in part at least, to the state changes, especially maybe in bonding? We just had to cut somewhere, and so you chose to cut out of the streetlights and traffic signals as opposed to paving budget?
Yeah, and we are going to try to backfill that with some of the parking meter money that I spoke about, but it, yes, your line of thought is correct in why we're making these tough decisions.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I wanted to ask, almost everything, of course, in this division is under transportation, but in your memo, you have one item that's under Community Health and Vitality, which is parks, trails, green space, specifically urban forestry, which I thought was under Parks and Rec, so is that a mistake, or can you speak to that?
So, we partner with the Parks and Recreation Department on maintaining the urban forest. They do more of the proactive work of tree trimming, plantings, et cetera. We tend to focus our efforts on unsafe removals, so it's a partnership in the overall management of the urban forest.
Okay, but is there any money in your budget for that?
Yes.
Okay. Because I, all of, like, there's no general fund used, so it's, but, so it's allowed to use local road and street funds as such for-
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions from council members? Seeing none, we are ready to go to the public and see if anyone in the public has a comment about the parking services, the street department, the traffic, or it could take, either one, actually. Go.
Good evening, Chairperson Roth. This is Christopher Rezzy from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Since I was up, I thought I'd just give Mr. Wason credit and how accessible he is. Since I was up, I thought I'd just give Mr. Weason credit and how accessible he is at Public Works. I've always teased on the annexation, how do we plug, why we would live in the city? I go Public Works. They do a great job. The streets are wonderful. Mr. Joe Van Devender does a wonderful job. And I notice these things and the improvement we've seen over the past few years, so I just want to give kudos on that and not speak to the budgets. But if anybody can make ends meet, it's Mr. Weason on the budget issues that we're facing here in Bloomington, probably a lot of other municipalities. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone online to make a comment? No one online, and then no one in the room? Okay, back to council for final comments. Councilmember Rallo?
Thanks for the presentation. Excellent answers, Mr. Weason. Councilmember Stossberg just showed me the map that you're referring to. It's really awesome. I had overlooked it. So clearly you're on top of it. You at least know the need, and we can see the need, so that's a very valuable tool and hope that we can address it. So thanks for your work.
Other final comments from council? Oh, Councilmember Stossberg?
And just for context for the public, if they're like, what map is it that you're talking about? If you go to the street division page on the city website, there's an interactive street paving map with current and historic, and you can navigate through like what paving projects there are for this year. But then you can also click off of that and on to, what is it called? The pavement condition index. And then all of that is color-coded with a key, and you can kind of see, and I would then assume that what you all do is you go and look at the very poor and the poor and build up from there in terms of your priority list. And yeah, so I think that that's just something to point out for the public because it is, there's a lot of information on the city website, and it can sometimes be like challenging to find what it is that you want, but that is there. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other final comment, we are ready to move to parking services.
All right, well, here we are, the last presentation of the 2026 budget hearings. While I'm always last, it feels a little bit different this time after presenting on three of four nights instead of just one marathon night of seven presentations. So I'm not sure what I like better yet, but I'll be sure to let you all know as I figure that out. Parking services has really epitomized something that I've recognized more and more each year that I've been leading Public Works. When you have a team overall of roughly 140 full-time employees across all the divisions, you realize that that is 140 personal lives that have their day-to-day challenges, whether with personal or family health issues, loss of loved ones, injuries, and more. The team at Parking certainly has faced big challenges in the last year, and I'm proud of the way that that entire team has stepped up to support each other. It's also been a very busy and sometimes really frustrating year at Parking Services. As discussed in last year's budget hearings, we've been undertaking a master planning process for all things parking in Bloomington. We're nearing the midpoint of that project, and we are excited to see the results of what is recommended for how we manage on-street metered parking, garage usage, permits and technology, neighborhood permitting, among other topics that impact parking across the city. This hasn't been the frustrating part. The frustrating parts of Parking Services this past year involve several areas that we're actively working together as a team to address. Our parking enforcement team is likely the most verbally abused group of staff members across the city. Rarely does a day go by where one of these staff members are not verbally abused or harassed in some way for simply enforcing the rules of parking. For all those watching at home, we seriously do not know if the meters expired for one minute or for an hour. It's either green or red. We've also had some very frustrating capital projects that have not gone as we had hoped. We've been quite disappointed in a vendor for both of our elevator projects at the Morton and Walnut Street garages. This vendor is very aware of our unhappiness, but it doesn't change the fact that the projects are behind schedule and not completed to date. We're very close to completion, and we look forward to closing those projects out, but it has been nothing but a nightmare, and I say that publicly. The main budget highlights for 2026 include reductions of our 300 lines from projects that were, I should probably click through some slides here. So overall, and just looking at our 2026 budget, we do have some pretty major reductions in our 300 lines that were from projects that were completed in 2025, like the Parking Master Plan Study. And we're trying to stay steady with our other budget lines while trying to stabilize our overall Public Works budget. Some of the things that we're really looking forward to in 2026 is, you know, we know we have the master plan underway right now. We look forward to being able to start implementing on those recommendations, which will probably include code updates, include code updates for the city council. We've been doing a great job of adding more and more ADA spaces, both in the downtown and throughout our neighborhoods. And then we've been really working on updating the pavement markings for our parking stalls as well. Some of these challenges, we know we've got these budget reductions coming. We know we're trying to be creative in how we operate and manage. And, you know, at the same time, this is a division that's had pretty high levels of turnover, both with our parking garage and other staff members, so we're really just trying to manage the staffing challenges on a daily basis. Otherwise, we look forward to working with all of our partners, including the Transportation Commission, the Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Bloomington, Inc., all of those businesses and residents that are impacted by our parking policies, and look to make improvements to all things parking as we move forward in both the latter part of 2025 and into 2026. I'd be happy to answer any questions as we close out these budget hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Weason. Questions from council members? Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, my question will be, I guess, about the Fourth Street parking garage. My understanding is that the Convention Center will be using it, and there's adequate space. Is that still the case? I asked this question of John Wyckart. Is that your assessment as well?
You know, we expect that we will have some capacity to serve the Convention Center, whether it's enough capacity to serve all of their largest events as they grow. I'm not certain that would be the case. The rebuild of the Fourth Street Garage has been successful. I think our occupancy rates are pretty strong. Our revenue generation's been pretty strong. It does have some capacity still, but, you know, for that largest, biggest event at the new Convention Center, I don't know if we'd be able to handle all of their parking needs at the Fourth Street Garage alone.
Okay, interesting. Well, then it begs the question, where will they park, which I guess has to be resolved at a different time. But the revenue has been adequate for servicing debt on the-
I'd need Controller McClellan to jump in and verify that it's actually meeting all debt obligations, but I know it's improved over even the first year of operations, that's for certain.
Good to know. I'll just issue it in a written form.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Other questions from council members? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, two questions. One of the goals you have for, well, one of the updates on 2025 goals that you had in your memo was to install license plate recognition software at city public garages, and that's part of the Walker study.
Yes.
I've heard from constituents a lot of concerns about privacy when there are license plate readers, you know, either used by police or by other government entities. Have you, what is the, I guess, what is the argument in favor of using those?
Efficiency. There may be some privacy concerns. It's pretty standard practice across most major parking operations, whether it's Indiana University, other cities. The license plate reader system is, it's a matter of efficiency. You know, we're, we originally were hoping to move to that this year, but knew we had the master planning, master planning study taking place, so we didn't try to move forward with anything. We wanted the study to look at it and offer recommendations, so we're going to wait for that before we make any final judgments. But it's getting to be more and more standard practice across the industry on how you manage parking throughout downtowns and other facilities.
So let me understand this a little better. This would be a way to, to monitor cars and then charge them for the parking, or how does it work?
So let's think about it from the perspective of like Park Mobile. You know, the officers are often, you know, so a beat officer for parking enforcement that is doing, whether in a parking meter or if we went to Park Mobile in the garages, instead of having the officer type in the license plate number into a handheld to then determine if the vehicle has paid for their parking through Park Mobile or not, the scanning takes place. It's, I wouldn't know the rate of efficiency, but, I mean, it's got to be tremendously high compared to having to manually type in and get the license plate correct. So it's, so it would be more to make sure that the parking fares have been paid, and then if not, then you would go ahead and issue your citations. So it's definitely just a matter of efficiency and being able to do things much more quickly. So yes.
Okay, let me try to squeeze in a second question here. The, you mentioned the frustrations with the elevators and the parking garages being out, and I've certainly noticed that. What accommodations are made while the elevators are not working for people?
Yeah, we have phone numbers posted if folks need assistance with mobility and things. They don't call very often, but we respond quickly when they do. You know, we've got a lot of folks that have been walking the stairs and having to utilize that, but as soon as we get a call for assistance to, we respond with, with our staff.
And so then the staff, like, has a golf cart or something?
Whether it's one of our EVs or one of our vehicles, we'll tend to give them a ride up to the floor they're on.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep. Not ideal, let me tell you.
Other questions? Council? Councilmember Stossberg?
I just wanted to know, in your memo, under other services, it says that consultant fees and costs related to a major downtown project were removed. Like what major downtown project, and was that removed because it's complete?
So that's going to refer to probably the ADA marking project that we did, some of our other striping projects, and, oh, what was, oh, and then, yeah, the Walker parking study, we don't need to fund it into next year.
Okay, so those are things that were complete?
Those are things that will fall off in 2025.
Okay, great, thank you. And then the other kind of detailed question that I had related to the line items at the end is that you have a bank charges line item that was budgeted $10,000 in 2025 and then jumps up to $75,000 in 2026. Is that just like getting it aligned with what it should be because the 2023 and 2024 actuals were like in the hundreds of thousands? Like what is, what are these bank charges stemming from?
I'm, I think this is the first time all of all of my hearings that I'm going to just say, Nate, can you handle this one?
Thanks so much.
Hi, Nate Nickel, Public Works Department. So bank charges refers to, they're essentially a transaction fee for credit card purchases, and it's the fee that's assessed for those. We have been using hardware and software lines to cover those, and we feel it's more appropriate to put those in bank charges, and we've been moving money back and forth to bank charges over the years. So putting it in bank charges is really more of a true transaction cost, and we felt that would be more transparent to put it in bank charges.
Okay, I just want to point that out, I suppose, to people that it does actually cost something to use your credit card for, you know, small purchases.
Yeah.
It does cost money. We're essentially the merchant, so we get the credit card fee with that. And most people, almost, you know, everyone doesn't have cash. They pay with cards, and our system's set up for credit cards, so really it is a reflection of the cost that we incur.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
It's just like every restaurant you go into right now that says 3.5% extra if you don't pay cash.
Yeah.
Other questions from council? Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, I have a little bit of time, I think. Scooter enforcement, where, how are we on scooter enforcement?
We're still moving them. We're still having staff issue fines to the operator when we find them and not in compliance. You know, we're much better throughout the downtown core, the commercial districts, when we get out into the neighborhoods and we have folks leaving across sidewalks. We're not seeing those as often, so I'm sure we're not doing as good in neighborhoods as we are in our commercial districts, but that's kind of the nature of how the scooters get dispersed.
Are fines being issued?
I believe so, yes. I'm pretty certain they're still being issued when we find them, and I can verify what we've issued to date.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from council? Seeing none, anyone from the public like to make a comment at this point? Anyone online? Oh.
Good evening, Chris Rezzy from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Good job, council, tonight on questions. You can tell you're in full fourth-day budget hearing mode. I want to add a question to parking in, on the Trades Garage with the Forge added and then the new hotel. Where are we on capacity? That garage had notoriously been very little used in its first few years, and with the Forge and the new coming hotel, how would we look in that specific area for our parking needs? Thank you.
Any other comments from the public or anyone online waiting to comment?
No.
Thank you. So back to council for final comments. Councilmember Stossberg?
I actually have a follow-up question for Mr. Weason about the license plate reader because the way that you were describing it to Councilmember Piedmont Smith was that it wasn't necessarily going to be something that scanned like every single license plate coming in, but it was going to be a tool for enforcement officers. So can you like clarify exactly how that would work, say, in parking garages or?
Yeah, it's okay. Go ahead and respond to that. I'd like to know the answer to that.
Yeah, if I could, if we could address this in more in the written questions, because what we're really waiting for is Walker's recommendations on this, and we actually have an internal staff checkpoint tomorrow where I can ask them some more questions around this. But the intent, the intent is that it does read the vehicles as it goes by to determine, and then that feeds into our system, our T2 system, I believe is what it would be, to determine, is that paid parking or not? When we were originally talking about it with the parking garages, it was to be able to go to a more gateless system where you don't have the gates. But we were hoping to do that, but then with the master planning process, we held back, wanted to go through that to determine what the recommendations would be before we implemented. So there's still a lot of room to discuss this and figure out what the best way, or if it's a technology we should even use.
Okay, so maybe like two different types of license plate reader? Okay, because, I mean, one of the reasons like this is attached to a comment for me because I actually got a parking ticket once because the parking enforcement officer had misinputted my license plate number. And so like that is the kind of thing that happens because they're small little devices and, you know, like, that just kind of happens sometimes, so I can really see how that piece of scanning could be a really valuable piece of efficiency, both for the parking enforcement officer, but also for the person who is then either going to get a ticket because they deserve a ticket, or get a ticket and then have to go through the whole appeals process and be like, I really did pay my parking, and this is not my license plate. And so like I can see value in it, but I can also see concern, you know, if we're like scanning everything and it's going into some like mega database. So I guess those are two different like pieces in terms of that. So I just, that's why I wanted to clarify that purpose with that question. And then that little comment and anecdote. So thank you very much for-
Absolutely. Thank you.
-your involvement.
Other comments from council? Councilmember Sari?
Just very quickly, Director Weason, I think our adopted rules allow us to ask the question that somebody asked from the stand, so would love to give you a chance to answer that.
Absolutely. As I said to Deputy Mayor Napp, as she was sitting next to me, and Mr. MG said, was asking about, you know, the hotel being built and how that would impact the usage rates at the Trades District Garage, I said out loud, it can't be built fast enough. It's clear that, you know, the Trades District Garage is underutilized right now. I think the intent of when staff was originally recommending that, however many years ago, when it got approved, was that they were hopeful the Trades District would have developed more quickly, and that garage would have been more heavily used more quickly. That has not been the case. I blame some of that on COVID, you know, like and the impacts and folks not returning to the office as much right away. But that hotel, we have the capacity. We can't wait for it to get built. We will house all of their customers for as long as we have the capacity. You know, and the Forge is built, but I don't believe they have occupancy yet of major companies that they're trying to bring in, but we can't wait to sell those permits and bring that revenue in to make sure those bonds get paid off quickly. quickly.
Other final comments or questions? You can use your comment as a question, but then you won't get to comment. Councilmember Rala?
Thank you, Director Wayson. I appreciate your answers. Looking forward to potential revenue sources, parking meter fees is probably one. And I suppose we're probably in for debate on competing uses, whether to pave, use the money to pave, or whether to use it for something like transit. Is that, is that debate going to occur? And will it occur before counsel then?
You know, I guess my answer to that would be, the usage of the parking meter funds can certainly be up for debate, but it's also only up for debate within the limits of which the state law allows you to spend those funds. So I don't have that list right in front of me or memorized, but it's very much, you're restricted in how you can use parking meter funds, what types of investments you can make, where you can make them. So we've been, you know, I know we've had staff reviewing that. I don't have it all off the top of my head, but I don't know if investing in transit routes or transit service generally isn't allowed use for parking meter funds, but we can certainly find that out.
I guess it was rhetorical. It will come before counsel, since it'll be appropriation ordinance of some kind.
If we were to change rates, any rate changes would certainly come before the counsel, and then any appropriation requests would come before the counsel.
Well, and the, and the desired use would be specific probably as well. I mean, I would assume counsel would be
Guess I'm not following.
That's a
Anyway, I'll leave it.
Debate we can figure out in another venue.
Thanks.
Any other comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Just to put a plug in for that parking study that Walker is doing to come to the Transportation Commission, we obviously have some expertise on the Transportation Commission that
We're recording them at their September meeting.
Has a lot of information about parking.
Yep.
And I think that's a good venue to, to discuss their findings, so.
At the next meeting, we're giving them an update of the Transportation Commission.
Great. Yeah, I think it's very important that Public Works be part of the conversation on that commission in general. Thank you.
Councilmember Daley?
Thank you. Sorry, clarifying question on the, sorry, I know. We're breaking the rules left and right tonight. On the parking scanners, it can check, so they can check T2 and Park Mobile too?
I needed, that's what I need to kind of clarify and figure out.
Okay.
It will input into our systems to be able to determine if payment has been made or not.
Got it.
So, but we can, we can definitely get some very good clarification on that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I'm not sitting back down until we're done here.
Any, any other comments or quick questions for Mr. Wayson? Councilmember, Councilmember Sari?
Just a quick comment, more so, I think, for us. But I think, I think it raises a really important question on, on sources, when we think about sources of revenue, and parking meters are one such source of revenue. You know, somebody sitting in the room here who's been advocating for years of us increasing parking fees, for example, or at least thinking a bit more critically about, you know, different methods of parking and places where it should cost. But I'm pretty sure that those funds can be reverted to the general fund. Anyways, it is a, it is a thing that we should pull the thread on because, I mean, again, in our current environment, these are, I think, you know, it's one of the tools that may be available to us to do the things that we want to see done in the city. So, it's something we shouldn't drag our feet on, I think, rather.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we have reached the end of our departmental budget hearing for tonight and for the series of four. And who's going to take over the, after this? Me?
You're chairing the meeting.
I'm chairing the meeting. All right, we are, I expect, thank you, everyone, all staff. We are ready to entertain the motion that was made at the beginning of the meeting.
We're ready to pass.
Yeah, but
We're ready to discuss.
Discuss it, yeah. And that's something that may entertain you. So, Councilmember Stossberg?
Sure, I'll go ahead and intro this just for a minute. So, this concept sort of stems from maybe the first budget night, especially when there were several councilmember comments about the cost of living increase and that it had been stated that the actual cost of living increase was 2.7, but the proposal was 2%. And we had kind of a follow-up discussion at the fiscal committee meeting about that concept and the statutory responsibilities given to counsel in terms of, you know, counsel can cut lines, but we can't add things. We can ask for things to be added of the administration, but that one of the kind of directives from the administration was that like if we want to add things, then we also need to be willing to kind of say out loud, hey, like, like, think about cutting, you know, money from here so that we can add to things. And so there were a couple members who expressed specific interest about those COLA increases and wanting to get those up to 2.7%. I believe in the fiscal committee meeting, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, from that meeting, that the controller identified that that would be just under $500,000 or so. And so that's at least one topic of discussion I wanted to make sure to put before counsel. We would have to like go through kind of an additional process of like, like official recommendation and approval for those kinds of changes. But to be able to right now say, hey, like, do we want to try to do that? Are there specific places that people could identify and go like, yeah, I want to prioritize that 2.7% and, you know, taking money out of this line or taking money out of this like, like bucket or category, or like any of those sorts of ideas in terms of prioritizing. So that was at least one topic of conversation that, you know, I heard on the first budget night, it was kind of echoed in fiscal committee, that I wanted to give us a chance to talk about, and this was like the only time that we could really do it in terms of our schedules. And then the other piece, of course, is going, hey, like, what else do people want to talk about in terms of overall impressions of the budget, overall, you know, things that they want to contribute or think about modifying? Because there's a really pretty narrow window that we can really think about changes to the budget before the controller needs to submit things to the state and get the ordinance ready for our, like, meeting on September, I think it's 24th. So, that's like the intro, I suppose, in terms of what kind of feedback I was thinking that we would be able to share with each other, with the deputy mayor, with the controller, who I hope is still online, in terms of general impressions and general potential will of the council to make any budget modifications.
Does anyone have any additional input or response or questions? Or, I guess we could invite the administration to respond.
Deputy Mayor Napp, just so everyone knows, the controller and I already talked about the cost of living, and she thinks there is, she's willing to accommodate that. You know, I think on the administrative side, we were all so nervous about that idea. So I think, you know, going up to 2.7 is possible. It is a big chunk of change, and I think that's helpful for all of us to know that it is, you know, just under half a million dollars. And as we discussed at fiscal committee, finding half a million dollars is possible. And as we keep having conversations, finding multiples of half a million dollars over and over again becomes less and less possible. And I know that it's very difficult in this kind of budget, or even in budgets of the past, to be able to really see what can you cut? What, you know, what is, when you're looking at category lines or even light items, what does that really mean? It's difficult for us, too. So, any, we're looking for anything you can tell us about, hey, here's a general area where if you were to suggest a cut there to accomplish some other goal that we all want to achieve, whether that's more, deeper investment in roads, or more sidewalk repairs, or whatever that thing is, it's helpful to us to know where, where we might have some common ground. So, anything is helpful.
Thank you for that input. Any other councilmembers have anything to say about this? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Well, yes, I'm one of the councilmembers who, who spoke up about the cost of living increase not matching what it actually is costing people to live, the cost, the actual 4.7%, which is the, the official, 2.7%, sorry. Yeah, no, that would be, that would be really bad, which is actually, you know, keeping up with inflation, whereas what the budget that's presented to us has 2%. So, I am in favor of, you know, increasing it to 2.7%. I think, you know, we're, we're adding staff before we're doing right by the staff we already have. I think that's a bad practice. As far as where that money could come from, I, there's one spot that I, you know, I've, I've put in my questions for the legal department, their special legal services is budgeted substantially higher between 2024 and 25. I don't know, you know, it's budgeted at $917,800, and I'm curious what the current balance is in that line, if they really need that much money. It's substantially higher than under the previous administration, and I don't think we're more litigious than like in the previous administration. So, that's, that's just one line that I was eyeing for maybe some savings. But I would love to hear from colleagues if they would also support increasing the COLA.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes, I support that. Thanks.
Any other comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Rala?
I also support it. We went through a process, and I appreciate the administration raising salaries, which hadn't been done adequately to reflect previous inflation, and that's bad for morale, it's bad for hiring. And I think that we ought to keep pace, if at all possible, that should be a priority, and I appreciate the administration's willingness to do that. Perhaps looking at consultant reports and looking at, yeah, legal fees, I'm not sure specifically what they're earmarked for, and in a large-scale road projects or something like that for purposes other than, well, major redesign that could be delayed for some time, I suppose, which we mentioned earlier, might be targets, but maybe we could correspond regarding that. I'm sure we all can go through the budget and perhaps come up with ideas. Thanks.
Other comments by councilmembers?
I'll just chime in to say, I agree, we should, I support the idea of raising the COLA to the cost of living. If not, it's really effectively a pay cut. And I think that has an effect on morale. I mean, most of us have probably worked in jobs where this happened, and it does feel like you're devalued and it feels like a pay cut. When we know full well, and everybody talks about how much everything's costing, or everything costs, but the place we can cut is in, is with paying our employees. Mr. Wayson was just talking about, well, the cost of doing the street work and all these projects is going up, and we have to do it, right? And that's just, the cost is going up. So, those same expenses for materials and supplies and basics is going up for citizens, consumers. And so, I really think we do need to look for what some may consider, I in some cases consider sort of a luxury project, be it spending more money on looking at Walnut and College, or buying more right-of-way for High Street, or, you know, you know, those may, I'm not saying they're not, I'm not saying they're meritless, but they're working, and they've been working for a long time. And so, maybe those are places we could look for hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of savings, and maybe they can be revisited. If the need is still going to be there, then, if the need's going to go away, if there is a real need for those projects and it's going to go away, then they weren't really essential.
Councilmember, sorry, I think it was first, then you. Councilmember Sari?
I'm happy to not go.
I saw two hands, kind of.
Do you want to go first?
Okay, I'll go first. Two, two potential places, I think, maybe to look. One that we heard this evening, I think, in the, there was quite a bit of padding in, I forget, was it engineering? It was like an extra 1.2 million for implementation of a study. Other services line, I'll, let me actually bring this up, but, but there's like an additional 1.2 million from what it was last year, and the reasoning was, hey, we actually need a little bit of extra money because we're uncertain about the cost. So that might be a place, kind of gets to, I think, what perhaps was the most useful comment that any of us made throughout the four days here, is what Councilmember Flaherty opened day one on, is that, you know, this, this sort of concept of deficit budgeting, even though we haven't in five years ever actually spent in deficit, sort of suggests that actually there's a lot of padding in, in the budget. So, maybe that's one place to look. The second place to me, I think, goes to something that Councilmember Rosenbarger was saying in her comments tonight, is that, I mean, I think if there's a study being done, you know, I'll pick on permitting a bit more, but it's like we're still studying stuff that we already kind of maybe know the answers to. You know, those are areas where you could, you could cut them. I think there's other places our minds could go, you know, there's these small bits of things, you know, but I, I'm not much of a, you know, I don't think we'll find 100, 100 instances of, you know, $500 or something like that, or 1,000 instances of $500. I think it would be a lot easier to, you know, find those areas where we sort of overbudgeted. It's probably, seems like the place we should look, but.
Councilmember Daley?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I, I think we need to incorporate the cost of living adjustments as well. I've been saying for months that we are facing, you know, some really, really tough financial choices, and I think we need to be super strict with our budget. This is not the time for us to be looking at projects we'd like to implement or things that we think would be nice to do. And as much as I'd love to be able to do all of that fun stuff that we sometimes talk about, you know, wanting to do to improve the city, right now, we just need to kind of keep up the city, if that makes sense. And that means investing in our employees so that we can retain our great employees that we worked so hard to get. Because without them, then we will be in even worse shape. So, for right now, I think we need to kind of cut where we can and support the things that are most important, including our employees. And then, you know, hope that we then have that padding, you know, for those rainy days, for when things might get a little tougher in another year or two. Okay, that's it.
So, I'm sort of viewing this as more of a discussion at this point rather than a formal organized set of presentations. So if councilmembers already spoken and have more to add, please do. Councilmember Stossberg?
Thank you. I also want to say that generally, like, I support trying to get as close to the 2.7% as we can. Yeah, just generally speaking with that, I also, maybe kind of echoing a little bit of what Flaherty said on the first night, and Councilmember Sari just said about the reserves and the fact that we, you know, have a deficit budget this year, we had a deficit budget, and we're proposing one in 2026, we adopted one in 2025, in 2024, 2023, 2022, we had deficit budgets, but we actually came out ahead in the end. And so I guess I really want to figure out, you know, in that analysis, like, does it look like 2025 is, is also going to end up being a surplus? Because one of the things last year I heard repeatedly was that we have more surplus than we really want to have in terms of like how much surplus it's good to keep. And if we continue having these like deficit And if we continue having these like deficit budgets so that we can use up our surplus, but then we keep on having surplus, like, do we have to cut anything, or can that add to the deficit? And like, I'm not trying to get out of having to cut things. I appreciate the ideas of cutting something from the consultants, from special legal services. I'm hesitant about the design kind of stuff in the Row acquisition, because I think we're in the middle of some of those things, and it would be more detrimental to stop in the middle of certain things than it would be, but maybe some of those studies that we haven't started yet that could maybe be delayed. But I also would like, you know, a real analysis of this year's budget in terms of how close we're going to get to actually, like, are we actually going to end up spending more this year than we are going to have in revenues? And I don't know if we really have an answer to that right now, though the deputy mayor is standing up that maybe we do, but that's, I guess, one of the things that I want to make sure that we look at in terms of trying to get close to this 2.7%.
Oh, yeah, please.
So this question of, you know, what do we have that's padding in the budget is a really great question, and I just want to remind everyone that because we don't have the bond this year, that we actually did take out more already than may be visible. So if you think about our budget last year where we had, was it, what was the deficit last year? I'm sorry, I don't remember off the top of my head, but there was an extra $5 million that we spent that was in the bond that now is being absorbed by our regular budget process, and our deficit is still less this year than last year. I do think that there are some just procedural things that we could just, if we can just chat about them a little bit that might be helpful to understand. And one is, if I was looking at the Office of the Mayor's Budget, for example, for last year, we had open positions for a large part of the year, and that was true for other departments as well. And sometimes people will use some of that money for temporary employees, and sometimes the staff that are there just cover for it, or you just don't do the work yet if it's a new position. So I think sometimes in the past, when there are those, when you end up being saved at the end of the year, you've spent less than you planned, it's because you didn't have all of your personnel filled, which I think we'll see less of as we get deeper into the salary implementation. And the other thing is, I think, just philosophical about how often do we come back? If we don't plan for enough money, if we don't pad things out, like, ooh, what if we get a great idea in the middle of the year and we need to pay a consultant or buy something? There's an opportunity, for example, to buy a fire truck two years early at a better price. I'm just making that example up. If we get those opportunities and we don't have the money built into the budget as buffer, how hard is it to come back and get a new appropriation? Or how willing are you to consider those rolling, you know, we cut it closer to the bone, can we come back and ask for more? So I think there's wiggle room to think about how we operate and the kinds of decisions we make about that. We're willing to work with you on that.
Thank you. I'll add a few things. You know, we always talk, we always hear about wages being a problem in Bloomington, and wages being as big a part of the problem with the cost of living in Bloomington relative to other places in the Midwest or in Indiana, is just as big a part as the cost of housing, the cost of things, is low wages. City Bloomington is a big enough city, I mean, a big enough employer in this city that, you know, we can exert some upward pressure on wages community-wide, I feel like. And so, you know, to be doing this feels like we're doing something, rather than just constantly scrambling to try to find ways to subsidize housing and provide social services support, here's a way we can work on the wages side to push it up. So this, I feel like this is really important. And with that, if anyone else, oh, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I don't know if Controller McClellan is still on the call, but I want to recognize that.
Yeah, she is.
Okay, very good. I want to recognize that employees are paid from a variety of different funds, and where we've had the most revisions, or not revisions, reversions, is the general fund. Some of our other funds that have personnel expenditures in them don't have that kind of cushion, so, and if we're saying, you know, well, we can cut this or that in order to pay that higher COLA, we have to consider that, you know, what we're cutting may not be in the same fund as the fund that's paying for a portion of that salary increase. So I don't know if Controller McClellan is, can speak to that, whether that would present a very large difficulty in trying to expand the COLA.
Can you guys hear me?
Barely, it sounds kind of...
All right. Okay, so I'm kind of, it's hard to hear me? Is this, is it better if I speak a little louder? Okay, I see thumbs up. Isabel did an excellent job of describing the, kind of like, just the basis, the basics of how those funds work, and it was really great to hear Isabel describe that that way, because that is exactly how it works. We will, we do have some cushion in the general fund to absorb a 2.7% COLA, but other funds are a little more difficult, like the Parking Facilities Fund and the MVH Fund. But there are some options, some things like letting the general fund support that fund next year, or trying to find more cuts in those funds, maybe cuts in overtime. And Councilmember Stossberg is also, did a great job in describing the situation in the funds as not always spending everything that is budgeted in those funds, and so sometimes we have to wait until the end of the year to see those savings and be able to do some transfers around in that fund to cover the personnel costs. And we don't, that's not a good plan for budgeting, it's not what we want to do, but we know going in that there are some options. So I'm going to work really hard with the administration, with the other departments, to try to find a way to work that 2.7% into all the funds that we have. That's all I have. I am still here, and I'm happy to join the discussion and answer any more questions you have.
Thank you for your input and for responding. Councilmember Stossberg?
I just want to first say thank you to the Controller for being willing to do that work to try to figure out some of those details, and let me know what I can do to help support that. But I also wanted to speak to the deputy mayor's kind of question slash comment in terms of process with additional padding, and that idea that like, if some of the additional padding was taken out, then there would be like this higher potential for having to come back with, to ask for additional allocations in different ways. And I guess, like, it puts some, like, additional kind of onus maybe on us as council to have to deal with that kind of budget allocation, like, throughout the year. But as a personal matter, I guess I would probably prefer that systematically, as long as it wouldn't necessarily have this interfering effect. And I think for the most part, it, somebody else maybe needs to correct me if I'm wrong, like, a simple appropriation ordinance shouldn't be that onerous in terms of legislation, because it should be relatively templated, I think, in the same way that, say, a salary, like, our elected official salary ordinance is a pretty basic template. And, you know, if you just think, like, okay, we need this much money to go from this fund to this fund, that that shouldn't be, you know, this month's long process of figuring out how to write the ordinance. And so the only real gap in time, I think, that would occur in terms of being able to get that in front of council would be our summer recess and then August, because we don't have very many regular sessions in August generally because of budget stuff. So I guess that's a rambly way of saying, I would prefer that as part of process, as opposed to having like padding built in all over the place everywhere. Like, I'm not opposed to some padding, because I do think that things come up and it's, you know, much easier to process without it, but I'm also not opposed to having less padding with the expectation of more, or the possibility of more mid-year appropriation ordinances.
Councilmember Stossberg, could you elaborate a little bit on what you meant when you used the term interfering effect, this interfering effect? You mean just interfering with the flow of legislation through the year, or what did you exactly mean?
Oh, that, like, if something, say, came up in June, for example, that, you know, in the deputy mayor's example of, oh, there's a good deal on a fire truck, and we have one meeting in June, and then we go on recess until mid-July, then there's that like six-week gap, where, really eight-week gap then, where, you know, we'd have to have a first reading and then a second reading, and so there would be this like delay in that processing. So just in terms of like council calendar, there are a couple places where there could be a delay that maybe could make a difference, but maybe only a couple. So that's the kind of thing that we need to like be assessed in terms of like, that kind of padding, and because it's a question, like, how much padding do we need? Like, it kind of sounds like part of what's been built in historically is enough padding so that, you know, there's a very rare need to come back to council for those kinds of appropriation requests. And what I'm saying is, like, hey, let's maybe have less padding, which then, you know, is a higher chance, not necessarily 100% chance, but just a higher chance of having to come back. And I would be okay with that workflow, but I'm like one council member out of nine, and maybe y'all aren't okay with that workflow. But I was just, you know, communicating that to the administration, that that would be a workflow preference for me if that was plausible in terms of council schedule. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I understand. But thank you. Any final sort of council member statements or comments or thoughts you want to add at this point? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Well, I just want to encourage colleagues to, you know, if they have other reservations about this budget, now is the time to discuss those. I believe the Controller has a deadline of September 12th to submit total budget amounts to the state, and then, of course, the legislation needs to be turned into the council office 10 days prior to the September 24th meeting. So we are running on a tight timeline, and as you know, and as has been said, tonight, we can, when the legislation comes to us, we can only cut, we cannot add anything to the budget or revise in other ways. So for my part, the only other concern that I can think of at this point that gives me pause about this budget is something that I mentioned earlier, and that's about funding more planning studies before we can, at a pace that is faster than we could realistically implement such studies, because the studies have a shelf life, of course, and if we, you know, if we keep funding studies, especially given the new staff that has been requested by Planning and Transportation, they're like, oh, if we get these new, two new staff members, we can do two new studies. And it's like, well, wait a minute, you may need new staff for other reasons, but if this is the only reason, then I don't, I'm not convinced that you really need the staff. So that all hangs together for me. I'd like to understand why we are trying to churn out these studies when the implementation takes more time than the study. So that's another concern of mine.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Any other final comments that want to be made? I'll say, there's not time for this if it doesn't exist. I mean, I'm sure the information exists in scattered way, but I would really love to have a list of projects that I would consider to be somewhat elective projects, such as the Indiana Avenue College in Walnut, High Street, a list of what's been spent so far on each one, each project, what's been spent so far, what's it been spent on, and what remains to be spent to bring that project to fruition or completion. You know, to have that information and feel, look at that would be helpful in this, for me, very helpful in this kind of situation when trying to find some money for something that I consider to be an extremely high priority and an urgent priority, as opposed to more of a nice project if we can do it. Councilmember, sorry, I saw you.
Yeah, thank you so much. You know, one thing that, just reflecting on all of this, I think that is really, I think relevant to highlight is, I think, first and foremost, the time that we're living in with SE1 and all of these things, I think, highlights the fact that we as a city have actually done a really good job with budgeting for, you know, and, you know, I'm looking at the three of you sitting there who've, you know, been on council for millennia or whatever, but like, you know, but that we actually are in a really good position, relevant to the hand that we've been dealt, right? And I think that that, first and foremost, is something that we should be echoing to the public, that, you know, sort of, when you're looking across Indiana, you know, our Bloomington way has worked, okay? So I think is something really important. I think the flip side of that, though, is that we have healthy reserves, we have, you know, funds that we're being creative with, we have questions around additional revenue sources. But one of the things that I feel is maybe lacking in the current budget, which is in many ways a reflection of that positive nature of how we've operated as a city and how we continue to operate, and fantastic decisions that the current administration made and so on and so forth, is that in many ways, this budget to me is kind of like a, I don't know, like cruise control budget. I'm maybe speaking a little bit flippantly, so don't take this as like critique, okay? But in the sense that, on the very first day, I asked these questions about, you know, there's another side of how do you deal with financial constraints? And part of that is having a really strong strategy for where we invest money to save ourselves money in the future, or to produce more revenue in the future. And so this question of how are we going to govern and make decisions about potential deficit spending or spending into our reserves in the general fund, I think is something that we as a council need to answer. There's certain things that government can do, and perhaps only government can do, like investing in roads and, you know, implementing plans that we have on the shelf. And so I'd love, as we're continuing, you know, right now in this priority-based budget, as this step towards outcome-based budgeting, there needs to be some element of saying, like, this is what we're investing in, outside of just, you know, we're going to keep things going. And so, yeah, I think we have a little bit of space to do that, and I'm not talking about new and shiny things, I'm just saying that I think we need a set of, you know, decision-making criteria in the situation where if we were to cut this budget down significantly, let's say, but we want the administration to come back to us and ask for appropriations, like, what is our, what's our thought process in doing that, right? And can we give them some sense of, this is the way that we will think about spending beyond this line, right? So, you know, maybe a little bit all over the place thoughts, but yeah, that's sort of my general thoughts, but I do really think we ought to echo the fact that we really are in a fairly good position as a city, and that's because of decisions that have been made in the past, and I think that we're moving in an even better situation. So just wanted kudos to everybody on that.
Thank you for that comment. Councilmember Stossberg?
I'll just want to echo again what Councilmember Piedmont Smith said about studies, and because I kind of said it earlier already. because I kind of said it earlier already. And it's really like, I'm really like tied about this in a lot of ways because I think a lot of these studies connect to the Safe Streets for All Plan and that I do, like, every time somebody gets hit by a car, every time that there's some kind of fatal or high injury accident, like, I cringe and I go, yeah, like, that is a spot that is an issue and we need to figure out fixing it. And so it feels really urgent that we get those things figured out at the same time as, you know, you have to put it against the reality and go, okay, so we can figure out a good plan right this second for, you know, remediation of this, but then can we afford, you know, that actual remediation? And so that is definitely like, I'm sorry that Director Hiddle is not here and Director Seabor because they're the ones that, I mean, because some of some interventions related to safe streets are going to cost a lot and some of them are not going to cost very much. And they're the ones that are in the best position. I mean, so there's that long list of of design stuff, of road stuff that I cited. You know, I didn't, I am not the person to go through that list. Councilmember Ruff just just talked about, you know, actually wanting real numbers that, you know, go with the different projects that we're kind of in the middle of. Some of those things on that list might not actually cost very much for implementation, but would make a really huge difference. And so that's where kind of, you know, I'm, I agree with the concern about the studies, but I also think that there's just a lot more variables in in determining that actual cost of implementation than I I know than that I am prepared to know for sure, but that is information that the Planning Department and the Engineering Department should be able to to navigate, potentially provide us with, provide the Controller with, just to make sure that we don't end up with plans that sit on the shelf until they're expired.
So this is the area where your conversation is super helpful because based on last year's conversations, I would never in a million years have guessed that you would be amenable to cutting any kind of studies like that. The message we got last year was where are the studies? Why aren't you doing this work? Make the plans, move it forward. Or at least that's what we heard. Not saying that's what you meant to say, but that is, that is, that was a takeaway. So this is really helpful information. I do think, you know, I've lived in Bloomington since 1990, since before this building was renovated, before the Beeline Trail, before a lot of things. And so I've seen the impact of long-term planning and very ambitious transformational ideas that get invested on that take many, many years to complete. And so I I don't want to dismiss studies or long-term planning because I've seen how transformational it is and it's exciting and wonderful. And this is exciting, surprising, weird information that I'm taking in tonight, so I appreciate your candor in sharing it.
Hi, okay, I first, I'm just sometimes quiet. I don't exactly understand the purpose of this, but I'm trying to play along, I think. I don't understand the goal we're trying to get tonight, I guess. Okay. I first I will say, no, for me last year, and similarly this year, I'm like, we need to stop studying, we need to start doing. It doesn't mean cut studies that we need, like College Walnut, that was in progress and it was delayed and it wasn't funded last year. And like College Walnut, to me, are streets that they're part of our high injury network. People die on them, people are seriously injured on them regularly, people speed on them, their wide crossings, their high speeds, they're, I think that they are mostly dangerous. And like, I actually consider it like urgent to get that looked at and fixed, but I'm like, let's do it, right? Like, studying doesn't have to be, like, we can study and we can do in a year is the thing, like, we don't have to budget every year for one piece of a project, you know? And I, so I don't think it's like as straightforward as don't study, but I also want to say, like, don't use a study to delay work for me. So because like, yes, deaths on our roads like make me nauseous and like it is so urgent to me that we fix our high injury network, right? So I guess I don't want, I don't want it, if some council members are saying, let's not study things and like, let's wait on them, I just want to say like, I'm not saying that, I guess. Okay.
Councilmember Rosari?
Yeah, and one really quick comment and this courtesy of who I'm going to start calling our 10th member, but Kevin Keough sent, sent an email emphasizing something that that I think we brought up in in some threads, but I think said it in a way that is also worth adding to this conversation, the importance of looking at the revenue side. And he said, and I am now quoting, "When I was looking at the variance report, I was amazed how the estimated revenues were so low and there were very large positive variances. So seems that the city should keep tabs on the actual revenues through the year, keep current actual figures. Thanks." So I thought I would share his, his input because I think that's the really useful points as well that we've mentioned as well.
Any more comments? Councilmember Stossberg, maybe let's say, give you the last word.
Oh, great.
You introduced it. You can close it.
I, I guess I'll close it. I wanted to respond a little bit to the deputy mayor about, you know, her impression about the studies last year and just and just clarify that one of the perspectives I'm coming from is actually based on sidewalk committee stuff from when I was on that in 2024, where there was this conversation that was like, well, we, we had this plan and it's not really implementable right now and you can only like save it for so long. So it's one of like, you fund it this year or you fund it next year, like by the year after that, it it might not be applicable anymore because it would age out. So that's kind of where I'm coming from with this concept of like, when are the plans going to age out? And that's something like, I can't necessarily answer that from like my seat and my expertise. That's for planning and transportation and engineering because they're the ones that would kind of know timelines and I would assume that different types of plans, different, like age out in different, on different timelines. And and so that's where like, like, in terms of those plans and studies, they are an integral piece of this, of this conversation. Because I think like what I'm hearing up here at least is like, we're not opposed to plans and studies as long as they actually end up being implemented and doing something. And that there's this like kind of broad concern over the next few years, like, how are we going to implement them with this S E A one and and these new tax implications and like the, the ever downward spiral that is projected right now for revenues? And so that's the concern that I'm coming at from that. And then to Councilmember Rosenbarger's kind of comment, like, what exactly are we doing here? My understanding statutorily right now from our council attorney and term, and please, Attorney Lainer, like, correct me if I get this like flummoxed up, is that in terms of like the process of how we as a council would say, cut items and then request additions would have to come as a council vote, which would, like, we would have to actually like forward that sort of recommendation on. And so part of the purpose of this conversation was to figure out whether there was general support for the concept of doing something like that so that then when there's a more specific proposal assisted by the Controller with more specific guidance and that when we approach that, that there'll be some measure of expected understanding and agreement in terms of whatever ended up having to be cut so that then we could request that ad for the COLA. Did I get that right, Attorney Lainer?
Yes, largely. In fact, this is an issue that I'd like to talk about a little bit, particularly while the controllers here in the meeting. But the purpose of this meeting is to, as Councilmember Stossberg indicated, to discuss the budget and potential reductions in it. Under Indiana law, council may make reductions to items in the budget report or what is commonly called the budget book here. And the benefit of this evening is it gives the Controller an idea of potentially where those reductions might occur. Council prepares the budget ordinance with with the Controller. The budget proposal that you just completed reviewing and receiving input on ultimately gets rolled into that potential ordinance. So I'm curious as to, you know, we have a September 3, council has a September 3 meeting coming up. As Councilmember Stossberg indicated, council ultimately would need to vote in a public meeting on reductions to the, in the budget proposal by referring to a department, an account, line number, a specific dollar amount. I'm wondering if the Controller is suggesting that maybe there would be some proposal made for that meeting? The next opportunity to to change this would be in the actual budget ordinance. If there that on September 24th, if that then would need to be modified, it would occur via amendment in a public meeting. So those two processes are are different. I don't know if the Controller is able to speak to that tonight as to what she might have in mind.
Council President, would you like me to respond?
Well, yeah, that would be great.
Okay, great. Like we did last year, I think we, I've been taking notes of everything that you've said in this, and it has been really, really helpful. Our plan is to work on implementing that 2.7% COLA and and make cuts based on your and on your recommendations. I think that our plan, I haven't actually discussed the actual plan with the deputy mayor yet, but we could just bring an ordinance to you. Well, this is what we did last year. We brought the ordinance to you for the public hearing and we described any of the changes that we made based on recommendations that we heard during budget hearings. So we made changes to the budget, we described those changes in the public hearing, and then you still had a chance to respond to those changes or ask for other, like, make make cuts by a, by an actual vote at that time. There, there were no changes made last year. I think that the changes that we made and presented to you at the public hearing were accepted. And that is, that is my plan on how to proceed this year. However, if you want to have a meeting where you call up specific items and specific lines and take a vote on the, on specific changes, I would be completely okay with, you know, of course, with doing it that way as well. It's really up to you.
Thank you for that input. Councilmember Stossberg?
I, I want to kind of yield that, that I feel like that's like kind of a process and legal question to our council attorney to sort out over the next day or so. What is the best procedure for this based on legal precedent and state statute, et cetera, et cetera? And we should just keep in touch about that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger had a comment?
Yeah, I just think like the formality of what people are proposing was really confusing to me, like, I don't, I don't necessarily need to vote. I mean, I can email the administration and say, I don't like this stuff in the budget and I'm not voting yes on it unless I want. I just want that to be clear, like, and I can say, like, I've talked to some of my council members and like, they're on board, but like, we're not, this doesn't have to be some agreed on, five people have to vote on something for me to say, right? Like, I have some folks who don't like this and like, it's not up to me to figure that out necessarily, right? I just want that to like, we're, we're not in this, it's not that formal right now, right? Like, you all were making me, I'm sorry, my brain is very much mush right now, but you all were making me feel like we were just farther along, I think, and that I kind of like missed the opportunity to like have some conversations, obviously all within open door law. But like, yes, it's still, any little group of council members can email the administration and be like, we don't like this or we want to talk about this or, right? So I don't know, I'm not, I'm just saying we're not at a place where we have to vote on changes tonight that we want to propose.
No, you can't vote on anything tonight.
Right, sorry, yes, but we didn't have to be like, this many of us want this. Like, it's just, it's not, it's not ever necessary in this space. Yeah, we're allowed.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I would agree with Councilmember Rosenbarger, but I think that having this discussion tonight is helpful. It's public, it's with the administration, it's getting some ideas on the table, and frankly, it's a step forward both last year and this year under this administration. I think we're doing things better than we did beforehand. So, you know, having these kinds of discussions is good, even if we're not, you know, you didn't miss a deadline or anything, Councilmember Rosenbarger or anybody else, there's still time to discuss and there's time to, you know, have one-on-one meetings or two-on-one meetings with the Controller or whatever. But I think this is a good, I'm glad we're having this discussion is what I want to say. Thank you.
Well, I'll say, I agree, I feel like it's productive and helpful to be having this and having the administration here. Really appreciate the deputy mayor's input, Ms. McClellan hanging around and, you know, helping us. Councilmember Stossberg, you had another comment?
Yeah, I just want to say, like, in in terms of this, this meeting, last year, we kind of had a similar meeting, if you recall, because, and we were talking about the GOBonds and we were talking about the different things that we wanted to go into the GOBonds and how that was all going to go. But we were just able to schedule that meeting separately from the budget hearings. And this year, just due to everybody's schedule, that, that was the problem. So that's why it's like, we're doing it now because there was no time that was identified that could meet the needs of everybody who needed to be involved in that meeting. So that's, that's where like, I'm sorry if I like misconstrued a sense of urgency, it's just, it's only a sense of urgency and that like, we're like all here at the same time as opposed to necessitating that like one or two kind of person meeting. And hopefully this means that there will be fewer of of those on everybody's plate as well. So thank you all.
Thank you for reminding us of that. Any other comments before we wind up? Do we need to, do you feel like take public, go through public comment? Do you have a thought on that? Can we ask the legal counsel? Whether we need to take public comment at this point?
The, the public comment wasn't added to the notice or schedule for this portion of the meeting, so I would avoid taking the public comment at this point.
Sorry, you said, what was the last?
I would avoid taking public comment at this point. It, it wasn't added to the the notice or schedule for this portion of the meeting.
So not, okay. Well, with that, do we have to do a formal adjournment? I mean, does anyone? Well, we are adjourned.